Okay, very good. Thank you Ty and Sherri. This is our city attorney with us. Yes, she is. Andrea, if you're ready to report out a call session, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you. With respect to item 6.1.7, which is the Welch litigation matter, on a motion by Councilmember Bowders, seconded by Mayor Martinez, the council authorized the city attorney to defend the lawsuit. The vote was four zero. With respect to item 6.2.1, I would like to note for the record that this does relate to open session item 10.7 on the city's regular agenda. And with respect to all of the other items, there is no reportable action, but I would request that Mayor Martinez confirm that there is no reportable action for item 7.1.
Yes, for item 7.1, I will confirm that there is no reportable action. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. And we will begin the next meeting in three minutes. So I'll turn my camera off in three minutes. See you all soon. All right, folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Sherri and Ty, let me know when you are ready to begin the next meeting.
I am ready if Ty is ready. Ty, is everything ready in the room?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, we're all set, Mayor Martinez.
Sherri, are you there?
Yes, we're here and ready to go.
Trouble hearing you.
Do you need your headphones back on?
Oh, I'm sorry. My headphones are not connecting. I apologize. This is a problem on my side. Excuse me. Hold on, I'll pin it right here. Okay, I'm on my backup headphone. Go ahead.
Okay, we're all set if you want to call to order.
Very good. I've got the time at 5:17 PM on my side. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Emeryville Special Study Session for the City Council. Today is July 20, 2021, and please bear with me as I read the presentation. For marks into the record, I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. Those waivers will be in effect through September 31st, and therefore, our next likely in-person meeting is going to be on October 5th, for those interested. The City Hall is now reopened to public, and please check our website, emeryville.org, for our new limited hours. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide public comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website, @emeryville.org, and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you'll see a link and title, "Just Nick's an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hands feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as e-notification and on social media. So at this time, I would go ahead and turn it over to our clerk to please call the board for this meeting.
Councilmember Bowders?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. And now we will take up approval of the final agenda. May I get a motion and a second on this, please?
I move approval of the final agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Donahue and a second by Member Medina. Please call the board.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina? Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Sorry.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And now it's time to report any expertise communications for this meeting. Uh, Member Bowders?
Thank you. I had a meeting with Rich Robins and Jeff Sears of We're in Development last week.
I had a meeting with Rich Robins, Jeff Sears, and John Gooding.
And I have also met with John Gooding and Rich Robins. Got anything?
Well, I talked with John Gooding about getting together, suggesting we do it in person, which did not happen.
Couldn't do that. We understand why. Thank you. So now it's time for our public comments. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hands feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received by the online comment cards, or whether anyone has raised their hands to make audio comments.
No comment cards, and I see no raised hands at this time.
Very good. Thank you. That will close public comments. And now we'll move on to our study session, and the staff has entered the room to present. So I'll turn it over to staff to present on the side and thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I am Mira Desai, the Senior Planner. I will be making the presentation along with Valerie Bernado from Economic Development and Housing Division. Sherri, if you could please... Oh, there you go. So at the very outset, I would like to state that tonight's study session on the Werhams' development proposal has a very specific focus, and that, as we will explain, is related to development bonus points. This study session is not a review of project site plan, design, or parking. Next slide, please. Werhams' Development is proposing to construct a new five-story research and development building with a 450-space, seven-level parking garage on the western portion of the block bounded by 62nd and 63rd Streets and Overland Avenue. Next slide, please. So what you see here is the site plan. We have Hollis Street on the right side and Overland Avenue on the left. 63rd Street is on the top of the screen, and 62nd Street is on the bottom. One existing building that fronts Hollis Street and 62nd Street will be retained, and this is the building that houses Ruby's Cafe and 41 live-work units. The new R&amp;D building is sited towards the western half of the site, and the plaza area that you see on the screen opens to Hawkins Street. The parking garage is accessed from the 63rd Street. Next slide, please. The proposal will need 100 development bonus points for the proposed height of the garage building. According to our planning regulations, 50 bonus points must come from paying an increased affordable housing impact fee, and the other 50 points must come from provision of community benefits. Next slide, please. Our regulations outline seven possible categories of community benefits that include public open space, zero net energy, public improvements, utility undergrounding, additional family-friendly units, monetary contribution to citywide fund to support small businesses, and, in the last, flexible community benefit. Next slide, please. Flexible community benefit is an all-encompassing undefined category that allows the developer to be creative by proposing a community benefit that is significant and substantially beyond normal requirements. Unlike the other six categories I mentioned, if the developer elects to obtain required bonus points under this category, then the entire project requires approval from the City Council with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. Werhams' Development has elected to obtain a portion of their bonus points under this flexible community benefit. The purpose of the study session is only to solicit feedback on whether Werhams' proposal for flexible community benefit is something that the council is willing to entertain. If so, then the staff will schedule a second study session where the proposed will be presented in its entirety for council feedback. Next slide, please. So now I invite Valerie to discuss Werhams' flexible community benefit proposal.
Good evening. Werhams is proposing to convert the existing vacant live-work units within... into below-market-rate units to satisfy their need for flexible community benefits. Currently, there are nine vacant units at the property. Their proposal concludes that the conversion of those existing market-rate live-work units into the BMR units will result in a public benefit, and they're defining that that public benefit is reached by retaining legacy live-work units, expanding the number of low-income housing opportunities, and creating an affordable housing unit in a cost-effective way. Next slide, please. There are a variety of assumptions that they've included in their proposal, which include that the affordable rents to be charged to the converted units will be based on the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee-published rents, that the converted units will be set aside for households between 40% and 70% of the Alameda County area median income, that the converted units will remain affordable for a 30-year term, that the convertible... that the converted units will have a reasonable rent increase by 5% annually with a 4% discount rate, and that those converted units will only result from those nine vacant units that are currently there. Next slide, please. So in order to convert the non-affordable units to restricted affordable units, we wanted to identify what are some potential benefits and cons of the proposal, or of the policy of doing a transaction like this. Some of the benefits are that we could increase our affordable housing stock by adding to the number of affordable units we have here in Emeryville. We would also be expanding the affordable housing type for low-income households and artists by adding affordable live-work units within our housing stock. There potentially is no local financial subsidy that would be required for this transaction, which would also be a benefit. And then last, that the converted units may count towards the city's arena. There's additional analysis that has to be conducted related to that, but that is also a possibility. The cons related to allowing the conversion of affordable... non-affordable units into restricted affordable units are that, of course, that's a missed opportunity for this developer to contribute to some of the other community benefits that Mira already identified. We are currently unable to find a comparable program or policy that administers a zoning regulation policy that allows the conversion of non-affordable units to restricted affordable units in any other jurisdiction currently. And there also is a potential decrease in the valuation of the property, because the amount of rent that's collected on every property does feed into what the overall value of that property is. And so that also could be a potential con of participating in this type of transaction. Next slide. One of the things that we did want to look at and at least point out to the council and the public is, of course, our existing affordable housing program. Our affordable housing program provides that for new construction and conversion of non-residential spaces into rental units, that the developer would have to, of course, pay the affordable housing impact fee or set aside 12% of the total project units designated as below-market-rate or BMR. 4% of those units, of course, having to come from very low-income units, and then the remaining 8% going to low-income. Because they're proposing to convert existing residential units, the affordable housing program is not applicable. However, we do think that it could provide for a good basis for analyzing if we did want to move forward with a policy like this, what we may want to utilize as our baseline. Within the affordable housing program, there is also the requirement that an affordable housing agreement is required prior to the occupancy of those units, which was not addressed in the proposal provided beforehand. Next slide, please. That agreement that we would require would require that those units are affordable to low-income households for a period of at least 55 years. Again, the Emery Station overland is currently not required to comply with that requirement because the conversion of live-work does not qualify as the conversion of non-residential into rental. However, as I mentioned before, this could provide the basis for how we want to move forward. Next slide. So what I wanted to do was point out a couple of differences and potential policy decisions that the council will have to decide upon. Currently in Emeryville, we publish an annual affordable rental and income housing chart based off of the information that's provided by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So for a very low, which is considered a 50% of AMI household, our rent limits are set at $1,099. Werhams is proposing that we actually use the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee's definition of rent and income limits, and they define a very low-income household rental rate as $1,198. So there's a $99 discrepancy. That $99 is much smaller than the discrepancy you'll see for what we define as a low-income unit or those that are at 80%. Part of the biggest reason for that discrepancy is where you'll see there's $1,319 that we define for low-income units in Emeryville. That is based off of a 60% AMI calculation. HUD, as well as HCD, define how we calculate these income limits, and anytime we talk about things that are affordable to households at 80% of AMI, they are typically based off of the income limits of those at 60. The California Tax Credit Committee, however, does not do that. Therefore, they're basing their rent calculation off of 80% of AMI limits. Therefore, their rental category for a low-income unit is at $1,918, a $599 difference. Next slide. Another important to think about is what the targeting is. In the proposal that Werhams provided, they gave us two options, and both of those options, they were proposing for units with the understanding that this is something that could be negotiated. In option number one, they're proposing that of those four units, three of those units will be set aside to households below 50% of AMI, and one unit will be set aside for a household at 80. And in option two, it's the reverse, one unit at 50% and three units at 80. If we went back to our AHP program, we would look at the total number of units in the development, and then 12% of those units would be required to be affordable. That would net us with five units as our baseline. Based on the fact that 4% of those units would then have to be at 50%, that would generate two very low-income units, and then the remaining 8% would be targeted to low-income households that would net us with three units. So understanding what our baseline would be if we chose to use our AHP requirements for this flexible benefit shows you the difference from what Werhams has proposed in their proposal. Next slide. Affordability period. So under our affordable housing program, we do require that our units are restricted for a 55-year period that's recorded through a housing affordability agreement. Werhams in their proposal just proposed that the BMR units are affordable for a 30-year period and did not actually specify whether or not that period would be secured through a recorded agreement. So again, this would be a policy decision that we... that the council would have to make if they opt to go for this proposal, whether or not they wanted to have that agreement recorded, and then what the term of that period would be in order to determine the benefit. Next slide, please. Rent increases. So this is also something that we thought that was important to showcase. What are the trends of rents here in Emeryville related to our affordable units as well as to our market-rate units? And just for a source of reference, the information provided related to market-rate rents was provided by Rent Cafe. So you'll see between 2018 and 2021, there has been roughly between a 5% and 7% increase related to our rental rates for our affordable units. However, when you look at market rates, market rental rates have actually decreased in 2020 and 2021. There was that 8% increase in 2019. However, there's been a total 15% loss since 2019. So even though our affordable rents do continue to increase, and part of the reason of that increase is that it's tied back again to the net growth of household income in the area. Market-rate rents actually have not been increasing over the last few years, and so it probably would not be a good idea for us to utilize our affordable rents as the determination of what that rent escalation should be, because you can see that rents on the market-rate side are not escalating at the same rate, and it's important to account for that escalation factor on both sides. Next slide, please. There are also a couple of other requirements that we wanted to point out that are part of the BMR program. One being that there's a requirement for there to be a marketing plan that's approved by the city. It would require that the developer conduct a lottery related to the occupancy of the BMR units. We would require them to maintain a waitlist. There's an annual recertification process. There's an annual report process, and then there also is the submission of a management plan. These items, we thought, are important to identify because they were not addressed in the proposal provided by Werhams, but we want to make sure everybody understands that if we did use the AHP program as the basis for moving forward, that these would be things that would be required. Next slide. So what is our methodology for determining those flexible benefits? The planning regulations, of course, stipulate that the City Council shall determine the number of points to grant for proposed community benefits based on 10 points for every 1% of project construction valuation. The applicant has indicated that 1% of that construction valuation is estimated to be $2 million, meaning that the total construction valuation is about $200 million. In order for the developer to earn 30 bonus points, the project will need to have a community benefit valued at 3% of construction, or roughly $6 million. The applicant has provided us with the net present value calculation showing how they can achieve this. However, that calculation would need to be reviewed by staff, as well as a financial consultant to ensure that everything is being calculated properly and based off of the guidelines that the City Council would dictate. Next slide. If the council does determine that the proposed flexible community benefit should be pursued, there are a number of policy decisions that will need to be made in the future. And these include evaluation... a variety of valuation options, as well as input variables. So there's three valuation options that the City Council could choose to utilize. The first one is the net present value, which is the option that was proposed by the developer. That's going to actually measure the actual real net economic benefit of that project. We do believe that that probably is the right valuation to use, but we wanted to make sure we were providing you with some additional options that could also be used to justify the value. The second one is a benefit-cost analysis, which examines the overall relationship between the relative cost and benefits of a proposed project. The third option is looking at the net operating income and the capitalization rate, which is the evaluation of a property's value at any given point in time, taking into consideration restrictions on the use of that property, such as affordability. So it's going to be looking at the actual revenue that's generated to determine a value. So those are the three ways that we could be valuing what that flexible community benefit is. Next slide. But what's also very critical outside of... I'm sorry, if you could go back one? Thank you. What's also critical to understand outside of there's three methodologies that can be taken, there are a lot of variables that need to be decided and agreed upon. Some of those variables include the market-rate rents. When we looked at the proposal that was provided by Werhams, they identified a variety of units. Some of those units had varying rental rates. So one thing that we would want to be clear of is why is there a variety of rental rates for the same square footage and size of a unit? Do we want to take the average market rents in the area or the specific market-rate rents related to that unit at that development? That would be a decision that the council would need to make. Affordable rents. Which rent schedule does the council want to move forward with? Do we want to allow this project to be based off of the Emeryville affordable rents or on the C-TAC affordable rents? Remember, there was that $599 difference for 80% of AMI units between Emeryville and C-TAC. Number three, the rent escalation rate. Do we want to utilize underwriting industry standards in order to determine what the rent escalation rate is? C-TAC does put out underwriting guidelines, as well as HCD, and those typically are around 2.5%. Or we could choose to utilize the CPI, which is currently at 3.2%. Determining what we want to use as our standard for understanding that rent escalation can vary what the actual value is. The discount rate is also another value that we're going to need to determine. That discount rate is going to represent risk. Typically, that discount rate should be 1% to 3% higher than the rent escalation rate. And the proposal that was provided to us from Werhams, they actually had the discount rate at an amount lower than the rental rate. And from our discussion with our financial consultant, we don't believe that is the right methodology moving forward. Vacancy rate. That represents the amount of time that it takes to rent a new unit, and should also be included. And it needs to be included because no unit is rented on day one. Even though we have a high need for affordable housing, even in the market-rate side, a unit is never rented the day after it's vacated. There always is a time period where that unit has to remain vacant while they turn it over, qualify the next tenant. Underwriting industry standards typically have a vacancy rate represented at 5% to 7%. That should also be included in the calculation. And then the last variable is the term. One thing that we may want to also look at is the condition of the property and the useful life for that property, because that may influence what we want to have the affordability term as. Typically, we use a 55-year affordability, but if the useful life of the property is not as long, we may want to consider doing something slightly different. That's also going to be a policy decision that the council will need to make. Next slide, please. But what I did want to provide for you guys is just a brief example of how, when you play around with the different tones, how it can result in different values for a property. And I'm giving two examples here. One is a net present value example. And in this evaluation, we took the Emeryville rent schedule. We included a 5% vacancy rate, a 3% rent escalation, and a 5% discount rate. If we had the five affordable units, affordable for a term of 30 years, that would result in a total valuation of $2.3 million at the net present value rate, or $473,000 per unit. If we decided that we wanted it to be for a 55-year... If we decided that we wanted it to be for a fifty-five-year period, that would result in a $3.5 million total cost and a $704 value per unit. On the flip side, if we decided to do an analysis looking at the cap rate and the net operating income, also using the Emeryville rents, also including a five percent vacancy rate, and also estimating that the operating expenses are at thirty percent, this would be something we'd have to verify with the developer. If we wanted to reach a four percent cap rate for those five units, the total value would be 1.8 million, or $369,000 per unit. On the opposite end, if we wanted to have a five percent cap rate, we would be at a $1.4 million total cost and $295,000 cost per unit. So as you can see, as we change the variables and also change the analysis tool we use, we can come up with different values potentially for what that flexible community benefit is. Next slide. I'm going to turn it over to Meera.
Thank you, Valerie. So the Planning Commission held a study session on the project on April of this year. The commission was generally not in support of the proposal to obtain bonus points via conversion of a portion of the existing forty-one live-work units into BMRs. It was noted that this proposal would not actually add to the number of affordable units in the city, as the applicant stated during the presentation that these units were already being rented at below-market levels. Next slide, please. So the issues to be considered, and the feedback that we want from the council, first is, does the council want to allow the conversion of existing market rate units to below-market rate units to satisfy the flexible community benefit? If the answer to this question is no, then the second two questions are irrelevant. But if yes, then the question is, does the council want to follow the AHP guidelines or require a modified set of guidelines for the developer to comply with? And if yes, does the council agree with the methodology outlined by the applicant to calculate the value of the proposed flexible community benefit? So that concludes our presentations. We are available for questions. The applicant also has a presentation for you.
Thank you, Maru. Colleagues, are there any clarifying questions before the applicant's presentation? Member Bowder.
Just have one, which is, at the outset, I thought I heard Maru say there were nine vacant units that were proposed to be under the scope of this, and then I heard Valerie's presentation talk about four or five, and I'm just trying to understand how many units are being proposed for this program?
I'll try to answer that. So they did identify that there were nine vacant units in the property. They presented in their proposal two options for four units. However, they also stated that we could negotiate how many of those nine units could be converted to below-market rate. So it possibly could go up to a total of nine?
I see. Okay, that was helpful. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions for the applicant's presentation? Nope? All right. We are ready for the second part of the presentation.
Hi. My name is Claudia Capio. Greetings, council members, and good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. I work for Urban Planning Partners and am assisting Ware in this project, and we look forward to the council's comments and questions about the use of flexible community benefits for affordable housing. Next slide, please. The presenters tonight will be Rich Robbins and Jeff Sears from Wareham, myself, and Matt Malone from Perkins &amp; Will. Next slide. We want to quickly provide some historic context about the transformation of Emeryville in the last eighty years. The red outline is actually the future Emory Station campus. The city was mainly composed of large industrial buildings and parcels, including the former Westinghouse plant, which you see to the left. Next slide, please. Racing ahead to 2019, it is evident that the city has changed dramatically with numerous commercial, industrial, and residential projects. And within the red line again is the, all right, Emory Station campus with the Amtrak station developed as a transit anchor during the 1990s, shown at the bottom left. Wareham has held to a consistent and long-term vision for the city, from industrial to post-industrial to now the 21st-century biotech economy. Next slide, please. We thought we would briefly describe what we consider to be, to be mutual objectives for this project, including contributing to the biotech economy, enhancing the North Hollis area, and retaining a legacy live-work artist community. Next slide, please. This slide shows a little bit in more detail the Emory Station campus, and at the top of this slide is both the project site and the existing building. The substantial public and private infrastructure developed over the past thirty years is the glue that holds this area together, including streetscapes, trees, public spaces, and public art along Hollis, the Horton Spine, and the Emeryville Greenway. The proposed project will continue these improvements across 62nd, further strengthening the continuity and pedestrian-friendly environment of the North Hollis area. I'll now turn it over to Rich Robbins for a brief explanation of the existing building.
Thank you. Good evening. Wareham has owned this square block between 62nd, 63rd, Hollis to Overland since 1977. It was the site of the first legal live-work space in Emeryville, at that time considered incidental residential. So these loft spaces have housed and domiciled artists and creative communities for a long time. As a developer, the perspective as we expanded the Emory Station campus was, what's the best way to deal with this site? The simplest was, obviously, to clean the palate and take down old buildings that have outlived its usefulness. But there's a segment to this community that helped create the Emory Station campus and most of Emeryville, which was the artist community. And these unique spaces are rather large square footages with no metrics for affordability, so to speak. They are very unusual, and they house about forty different operations at this time. It has grown in, I decided that it was very important to maintain. So we tried to create a recipe that would balance both the future, which is the expansion of one of the most acknowledged life science campuses in Emeryville, which is the Emory Station campus, and also create a modern way to honor the past, which is the existing building sends the one-story warehouses. So it was trying to find a recipe that worked not only within your framework and ordinances, but something that would be more creative, that would allow us to continue into the future while not only honoring the past, but maintaining the present with this creative community. We're well aware that it's a difficult metric to contend with, but this is very unique housing, so much so, we've decided to invest in trying to maintain and keep it. So that really is the genesis of this idea of the recipe. We also had the opportunity under your ordinances to build a much larger new lab building. And we decided, because of the proportion and the perspective of the rest of the campus, that we felt this would work more effectively, not only fit into the community better, but expand the campus in a proportional way. So that really is the ideas behind. We're well aware this is stretching creativity, and it's a challenge for you to see what we're trying to do, but we feel very strongly about trying to make this recipe work and appreciate your analyzing this on that basis.
Next slide, please. There are two major project challenges that Wareham has for this proposal. One is that the site is bisected by two height limits, thus requiring bonus points to be attained to increase the desired height to eighty feet for the main building and fifty-five feet for the garage. And the other challenge concerns parking demand and supply. A conditional use permit is required to increase that supply in order to meet project demand. Next slide, please. These next few slides show the split site for the height limit and what that actually does to the building and why we need bonus points. The cross-section at the bottom is the proposed height in relation to the height limit shown in the red dotted line. Next slide, please. This next slide shows the aerial view with the proposed building height in relation to the other buildings in the area, and as Rich mentioned, the, some of the buildings are higher, and we could have gone as high as a hundred feet, but given the context and the character of the North Hollis area, we thought the eighty-foot building envelope would be the best fit. Next slide, please. So bonus points are proposed to be attained with a combination of open space and flexible community benefits. Next slide, please. I will let Matt Malone of Perkins &amp; Will briefly describe the landscape plan and open space.
Thank you, Claudia. Here you can see the overall site plan, which illustrates our substantial open space offerings. The main highlights of the plan are the brand-new streetscapes on 62nd, Overland, and 63rd Street, all of which meet or exceed city standards for pedestrian throughways and streetscape planting. We wanted to acknowledge that while we were proposing to remove eighteen existing non-nated trees, such as silver eucalyptus, ficus, and magnolia currently within the public right-of-way, as you can see by this plan, we are proposing a significant regreening of the site and streetscape, and will plant a total of fifty-seven new trees, including twenty-seven new street trees and additional thirty trees within our various open spaces. The next space I want to highlight is the central courtyard, with its dynamic design expression serving to anchor the terminus of the Horton Street Spine. Next slide, please. The space which you can see here is designed as the site's central gathering space, providing a destination for the community and building tenants, with numerous opportunities to sit, rest, socialize, or work outside. Next slide, please. Here you can see the Art Walk, an intimately scaled outdoor gallery space that serves as a much-needed mid-block passageway dedicated to local artists and a celebration of the site's industrial past. Here you can see the repurposed rail spur, as well as the associated loading dock on the left, which has been transformed into a series of viewing rooms, terraces with gallery windows along the facade of the garage, providing opportunities for rotating exhibition space that celebrates the local art fabrication community. Next slide. In this view, we can see the improved connectivity and direct connection to 63rd that we've introduced at the suggestion of the Planning Commission, which we thought was a fantastic idea and wanted to incorporate into the design. Here you can see the new connection, which provides additional planting, bike parking facilities, trees, and opportunities for art that create an inviting and safe mid-block throughway, which transforms this existing unutilized service area into a green and active neighborhood amenity, where existing residents, tenants, and the larger community can come together to celebrate the unique artist community here in Emeryville. Last but not least is a new amenity terrace on the existing loft building, complete with a green roof and solar panels, that help advance the project's many sustainability goals, as well as additional open space for the loft residents. Sorry, next slide.
I'm going to now, thank you, Matt, I'm going to now go into the flexible community benefits proposal. I think staff's done an excellent job of outlining some key considerations. But we want to just reiterate that in order to strengthen the relationship between the old building and the new building, and as part of the overall improvements for this site, the conversion of those units would be a positive step in sustaining and improving the community, the live-work community. These units, as Rich indicated, are large, and they are unique loft spaces. The level of natural light, the high ceilings, and the overall intensity of the community could not be duplicated in today's market, given construction costs. So these units would provide large, affordable spaces for artists and entrepreneurs in a real estate market where such units are scarce, if not, if simply not available. I won't go into the two examples. I think staff did a great job in terms of providing how we approached it with the net present value versus other ways. But we are very willing to work with staff to come up with a agreed, agreed-upon proposal. I think there are some key considerations. Next slide, please. That, for me, it all boils down to two. The thirty versus the fifty-five years, I think, how we calculated it, and sort of what we take into consideration with assumptions and facts can be worked through. But the thirty versus fifty-five is really key, and also the number of units and the level of affordability. Does council want to focus on very low, on low, on moderate? So what is the mix that would serve the community the best? Next slide, please. We also wanted to briefly discuss and describe the parking supply and demand dilemma here. These next few slides will present, will present that. Wareham proposes a 495-space garage, 450 spaces for the new building, and forty-four, excuse me, forty-five for the Hollis Street building. In sizing the garage, Wareham studied current campus uses and balanced this assessment with similar uses that were likely for the new building. For instance, the current campus has a high concentration of medical uses, which have higher parking ratios. Wareham needs to be in a competitive position of pursuing such uses for that new building, if warranted. Wareham also considered approved, approved parking ratios for other recent biotech development, such as the BioMed Realty proposal and the Lane Partners development in Berkeley. The proposed parking garage will have the lowest parking ratio of all the campus garages, and Wareham is in the midst of a parking demand study, and what the preliminary results indicate is that current marking condition, market conditions at other facilities all show a higher demand, based in part on 24/7 scheduled and longer employee commute distances. Next slide, please. That's just another perspective of the garage. Next slide, please. Jeff Sears of Wareham Development will now speak to the council's record on transit oriented development.
So, good evening, Mayor, city council members. Very quickly, I just wanted to answer a question I think you may be thinking. Why do you need a ratio of 1.5 per thousand? Emeryville has worked so hard on transit, it's hard to believe we haven't been successful. And I think what I want to stress is, we and you have been partnering to improve transit in the city for thirty years, and we together have been incredibly successful. Together, we built the Amtrak station in 1993 and have been running it as a transit center ever since. Together, we founded the Emory Go-Round, and I personally have sat on the board for twenty years and been president a large chunk of that time. Those things have made really important differences to Emeryville's situation in terms of how people come and go from work. Twenty years ago, you forced, as a city, you forced developers like us to build ratios of three per thousand to make sure people could park in garages and not on the street. We actually encouraged you to give us some ways to build less. You gave us some ways, and we did build less. Our latest project, Emory Station West, has the lowest ratio we've ever built at two per thousand. By building less over time as transit has increased, we've actually lowered the average ratio on campus overall to 2.3, 2.23 per thousand. That's a big headway. That's a third less parking over that last twenty years, and only made available because transit has worked. We believe we can still push towards transit and away from parking with your help. That's why, with a ratio we propose of 1.5 per thousand, it would be the lowest we've ever tried, half of what you were requiring back in the day. Many, many competitors have more. Claudia mentioned BioMed Realty, who has been approved that more, the city center lab building approved across the tracks from us has a higher ratio. The West Berkeley project that's been approved has a higher ratio. Mission Bay in San Francisco allows two per thousand parking for biotech buildings. So we're confident we can take the leap to 1.5. That's a big leap for us. And the other thing I'd just like to mention, the transit station, Amtrak, is most important for commuters because of the Capitol Corridor, and that is a great and successful service. But we do need to recognize, it goes north-south along the east side of the bay, and many of the people who work at biotech companies are moving from San Francisco in the peninsula or deep in the East Bay. And unfortunately, that transit is a little less problematic. It exists, but it's, you know, it's harder and less convenient. So I think we're doing a great job together. Wareham's committed to do more with you. We're doing many things on our own as well, but this is what we were thinking of when we proposed this ratio, and we're really But this is what we were thinking of when we proposed this ratio, and we're really gulping to do it, but we're hoping to be successful. Thank you.
Next slide, please. I just wanted to point out that Wareham's challenge is even more serious when you look at where the building sits within the transit hub overlay, which basically requires a 50% reduction across the board in order to comply with city standards. And we just believe that we need to account more for project-by-project, real-time biotech facility parking demand. Next slide, please. As Jeff mentioned, here is the proposed project in relation to other parking ratios recently approved or in the region. And you can, you'll note that we have the lowest proposed parking requirement of the group that we included for illustration. Next slide, please. In summary, we need to meet project needs, add community benefits, and contribute to the biotech cluster, and we seek a compromise and win-win situation to embed both these goals to make the project successful. Next slide, please. We would appreciate any feedback and comments about the de-restricted housing proposal. I will note that we do intend, if this proposal moves forward, and you obviously need to as well, to de-restrict the units to assure their affordability over time. So we look forward to those comments, and we thank you for your time and appreciate a study session soon with more detail about the whole project. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. And with that, I will turn back to my colleagues to see whether there are any clarifying questions for the applicant, or if any more have arisen for staff. And I'd also like to remind my colleagues that while we've been given a lot of background information tonight on the project as a whole, including the issue with the parking garage and the reason why the applicant is asking for the bonus points, we have a narrow focus tonight of whether or not we are willing to consider the transition to market rate housing to affordable housing as a community benefit. So with that, I will go ahead and take any clarifying questions at this time before we go to public comment. Vice Mayor Donahue, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand that the first part of their contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund would still be the case. Is that true?
That's correct. The first 50, the first 50 points would be met through the Affordable Housing Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, any other questions on the presentations that we've heard tonight? Okay, there are no other questions, so I'll turn to the city clerk to see if anyone has submitted an electronic speaker card. Now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments should have submitted a speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please do raise your hand feature visible on your screen. If you're calling in, please press star nine. City clerk, has anyone received, have you received any comments on this item?
No comment cards, and the only raised hand I see is Ms. Capio, which was probably for something else.
That was by, in error.
Oh, and now I do see a raised hand on the public, Brian Donahue.
Very good.
Go ahead and unmute this. Because if you will start the timer tie.
It's ready.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. I don't think we should be rewarding Wareham Development because they have been arguably, well demonstrably, a destructive force in the community. First of all, their projects are not pedestrian-friendly. They're extremely, they're stultifying from a pedestrian experience. Extremely corporate feeling and looking, has a suburban corporate campus feel, all of his, all of the buildings. The plantings are just very, like I said, corporate feeling. And I just kind of, I think we should be having a more vernacular Emeryville, maybe slightly funky feel, which is just more urban, more, you know, a little more gritty, maybe. And Wareham just ain't delivering it. You know, they're just delivering a suburban, corporate campus. Further, the delivery truck dilemma that Wareham has mired us in, especially along, you know, on Horton Street near the Amtrak Station, is just, is, you know, is epically horrible. And, you know, Wareham tried to save money by dumping their delivery vehicles in the public, onto the bike, under the bike lanes, on the bike boulevard, and it's just been, you know, an ongoing disaster. So I don't think we should be rewarding this developer for his, but he's had a lot of really bad projects. He's too much of a mega-developer. I think we should have some smaller developers we should be talking to, different kinds of developers, not the same, two or three. You know, it's always just these two or three mega-developers. I just think we should open up Emeryville to other kinds of ideas from developers. Wareham has been given too much public largess over the years, and we don't, you know, it's time to turn the page. We just need fresh new developers, fresh new ideas. Furthermore, Rich Robbins, CEO, has advocated strongly against bikes on Horton Street. He wanted to push them off Horton Street, advocated publicly for it, push them over to along the railroad tracks, just get them out of his way, and make the bicycling very much more circuitous route, less of a transit possibility for bicycles. And so he argued strongly against bikes on Horton Street historically. And then his public-private spaces are not used, his public spaces, they're not used. You can go to them now and you look, and they, and a big part of it is because they have a corporate feel, they feel cold, they feel, they feel private, they don't feel public, they're not used. And then I wanted to just say that, you know, just on a side note, Claudia Capio, who used to work for the city of Emeryville, was a staff member, you know, like, it's like a revolving door, now she's a lobbyist, you know, working for Wareham. And that kind of speaks to the culture of, you know, regulatory capture that Emeryville staff members have sort of devolved into, where they're supposed to be regulating, but instead they're paying more attention to what the developers want rather than what the people want. And to have Claudia Capio, you know, be now arguing for Wareham directly is, you know, evident of that. Before, when Claudia was on staff, she was arguing for Wareham, but, you know, from a, you know, from, while being a public employee, now she's a lobbyist. And it just, it's very illustrative, it just kind of shows us what's going on here. I think we need new faces, new developers, smaller time developers.
Excuse me, Mayor, the time has elapsed.
Hold on, my spouse wants to, my spouse wants to yield her time to me.
Speaker, is your spouse on the phone?
My spouse wants to yield her time to me, will you?
I, 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 you may, may, can you put her on the phone to do that, please?
There she is.
Yes. Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
Could you go ahead and state your purpose?
Purpose meaning like to yield time, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Except to say that I want to yield my time.
I want to yield my time.
Very good.
So, Councilmember Medina looks very surprised at that, but this is, this is a standard Emeryville protocol. We've done this since the beginning. Councilmember Bauders also looks very surprised. But this is, yielding of time is standard. It's been, it's been, it's been used since day one in Emeryville. I asked, to be honest, I asked for my spouse to ask if she would be willing to yield her time, mostly to test the council, to see, to see if you guys would be amenable to it, or if you would have, like, lay down some new paradigm whereby that's not allowed. And so I'm happy to report that you didn't do that, so that's good, you passed that test. Because I pretty much, I've finished with my comments, but I did want to make, have run you through that test, so congratulations, you're allowing free speech, and that's good. Yes, Councilmember Medina, that is good, you guys are allowing free speech. I almost was, I was a little worried, like, you weren't going to allow it, and then lots of, lots of castigating would be happening right now. But, but that's not happening because you guys passed the test, so good for you. But those are my points regarding the project. I don't think we should be rewarding this developer with this project, and we should open it up to other developers. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers with a raised hand?
I don't see anybody at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion. And could staff kindly bring up the slide of the staff presentation with the three questions directed at council?
One moment, please. I believe, can you re-correct me if I'm wrong, is that slide number 23? Is that it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
That is the slide I was looking for, thank you. So let's address these ones one by one. Number one, does the council want to make, to allow the conversion of existing market-rate units to below-market rate units to satisfy the flexible community benefit? So, colleagues, is there anyone who wants to start on this issue? And forgive me if it takes me a second to get to you, because I'm scrolling through the boxes.
Would you like us, would you like us to toggle back and forth between the full screen while you're, this is the primary question, is this first one? So maybe?
Yes, sure.
Can you do that, Sharon?
Yeah, let's, yes.
Yes.
So it's the overarching question, are we willing to consider the transition of market rate housing to affordable housing to use as the 50 points for the community benefit required for this project as proposed? Anyone have any thoughts on this? Vice Mayor Donahue.
The, the basic premise of what the presentation was about is, if we were to consider this, it's the beginning of negotiating about it. There are still a lot of points that were made of, that would have to be negotiated. So I answered that question, would we consider continuing to negotiate about this? And I say yes, I think that's a good idea to continue to negotiate about that. This kind of live-work space is valuable for our community, and it would be good to have some of that net affordability, but the terms are important and have to be negotiated.
Very good. Member Medina.
Thanks. I agree with Councilmember Donahue that this kind of live-work space is rare. I live in a unit similar to such, a little more built-out, sure. But I understand that for artists in our community, this is something that we prioritize and is part of Emeryville's fabric. That said, this is a lot to negotiate. My notes on this are extensive already, and we haven't really started. And when I was speaking with the developer, I was told nine units, and now on this slide I'm seeing four units. I'm not interested in doing this level of work for four units, I'm just going to say that. Like, this would take a ton of negotiation. I feel like the valuation is a nebulous thing that we're going to have to pin down and negotiate over. For four units, that's not particularly worthwhile. For nine units, it might be worth having the conversation. But in addition, I am thinking of the cost of not using that cash right now when we are, let's face it, a little cash poor as a city. And there's other projects that that flexible benefit, in terms of cash, could go towards. I'm thinking very specifically of, you know, finishing up the Doyle Street Greenway, which is right in that neighborhood, and something residents there have really been enjoying and I'm sure would like to see expanded. So for me, this is really a conversation about what our trade-offs are. I'll leave it for now, but...
Member Bauder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Rich and Jeff for taking the time to sit down with me to give me some of the context behind this, and I want to appreciate them for being on the forefront of live-work spaces in California here back in the 1970s with the development of this property. I think it's really important, they kind of, in a hurried manner, went over some of the historical context of this building, and I think why they're interested in these units. And I don't think that that was lip service, I think that that's sincere on their part. This is something that they've, they've modeled and found ways to work, and then Rich was pioneering in the way he handled that. I've struggled with this because I really, I really value adding affordable housing to the community, and I want to thank them for bringing a very creative proposal forward. I share some of Councilmember Medina's questions and concerns about the efficacious use of the city and staff time negotiating over this. I, just in the course of my thoughts in the last few hours, you know, leading up to this item, and then I added some here, I have already got 12 things I would want to negotiate in an agreement, and I just don't, I don't know that, I feel like it would actually perhaps be a very significant exercise and frustration for us to try to nail all those things down. I won't list them unless the mayor or the staff want us to do that. And I kind of agree that there are other things that we get asked about all the time as, you know, as budget chair, I know the mayor and I sit on the Budget Committee, and there are, there's an inadequate amount of funds to repair children's playgrounds, and children's playgrounds service hundreds of families in the community today. There's a desire to complete the Doyle Street transformation, as my colleague from the Transportation Committee noted, and we don't have an existing CIP allocation of funding for that. So when I think about it, I think all affordable housing opportunities should be taken seriously. And I'm open-minded still to having that conversation, but I just want to flag that the presentation I received today just left a lot of questions for me, and I don't know that it would be the best use of our time. I really appreciate again what they're trying to do, but I think the Planning Commission hit on a really important point, which is this is naturally occurring affordable housing right now. These units aren't being rented right now, and the fact that the city would not realize a $2 million benefit at the time that this project was approved, but instead it would slowly come out over 30 or 55 years, there's some question about the value of cash in hand today, the things we can deliver and improve for the city today versus the long run, and I don't, I don't know that this significantly contributes to our revenue goals. So I'm conflicted in some ways, but I'm happy to continue the discussion with my colleagues.
Very good, thank you. And I will close by concurring with my colleagues on this question, that I am interested in entertaining this question. I do, you know, as, as Member Bauder stated, there are a lot of questions still up in the air. I do want to be mindful of the useful life of the building, as was noted, it's a very historical building in the city of Emeryville, I think. But Member Medina is completely right, that the valuation of the affordable housing is going to need to be evaluated, and the difference between four affordable units and nine affordable units in a total of 41 units is vast in terms of percentage. I think there is still a lot to look at, and I'm also mindful of the amount of staff time that will be needed to analyze any proposals that come from the applicant. So I will put out there that I am in favor of seeing anything that comes back reflect what we already have in our affordable housing plan. And I will look more favorably on things that relieve the burden on our staff and also forward policies that we've already set forth in the city in order to create and maintain affordable housing. So I think that's an answer to that first question, would staff kindly put up the questions again so we can address the second question? Member Medina.
Can I, can I say that if we're going to kind of, you know, I felt that there was like some conflict between me and Councilmember Bauder, we didn't come down entirely on a yes. I'd say if I'm going to be a yes on this, and if the rest of the council agrees, I'd want the conversation to only be around a minimum of nine units. To, no, no fewer than nine units be the starting place for the conversation, because I don't want to spend staff time or my time negotiating, negotiating about four to seven units.
Go ahead, Member Bauder. Go ahead, Member Bowders.
Oh, I, I just wanted to, I, I similarly, I'm not a yes today, Madam Mayor. If there's, if we're going to go to yes, I would, my yes is conditional upon a whole number of things that would have to be included. So I'm, I'm leaning towards no, um, for the reasons Member Medina made. I, I think that there's probably better uses of the funding, so I'm, I'm not a yes right now. But if you would like us to entertain this, Madam Mayor, um, I, before we go to questions two or three, I would have to just state for the benefit of the applicant and for the staff, things that I would have to see so that it would be worth my time, because I would be a no at the next meeting on this.
Um, can I ask the city manager if there's a, you know, there, if you think there's a best way to proceed? Um, if that, you know, if we, if, if that, this is a, you think this is worth our time to have each of our, each member kind of state what their yes, no's are to get this to, um, get this process moving forward?
Well, that's sort of the, the big, the big challenge with where we're at is, is, is one of you said or came close to saying the devil really is in the details here of how the values are calculated or how many units, values that are assigned to those units. What I think staff was looking for was if, on the face of it, the idea of allowing the conversion of these existing units to de-restricted BMR units for a period of years to, to qualify as a flexible community benefit, then we would go off and negotiate, um, explore and negotiate those details with the applicant and come back to you with a more fleshed out proposal along with the rest of the project. Because one of the choice points is if you choose to accept this as a flexible community benefit, then the project as a whole comes to the council. So we would then be.
But the, the point is, the point is we can say no once you guys have put something together for us.
Right, this is not, you are not saying yes to the package tonight, you're saying yes to the notion. But the notion.
It's a notion.
Is undefined in terms of its, its, its details.
Very good. Member Medina.
Um, thank you, City Manager. I am somewhat in the same boat as, um, Member Bowders in this. Like, I'm, I'm open to a notion asterisk. I'm open to a notion if it considers these things. Otherwise, I don't want to waste staff time really having to bear down, negotiate and define something if it's going to be completely unacceptable on its face. So I think it might be worthwhile just having like a brief discussion about like what the minimums are. And I assume Councilmember Bowders, I probably have a similar list of concerns that we've jotted down.
Okay, so nine units for Member Medina as a bare minimum. And then, Member Bowders, do you want to go through your list?
Yeah, and I, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, I appreciate you asking the city manager the question you did. For me, it's time is money for the applicant. And I, I'm just mindful that what I don't want them to walk away from this meeting with is the belief that we're going to continue down this path. Um, and then it, we reached deep negotiations and then a majority of the council didn't vote for this. And there, when they could have saved a lot of time on consultants and money. And we also are down a city attorney, and so I'm mindful of the city attorney's time and the other things we've asked of her. And so it's kind of a combination of those things. It's kind of driving me to question things in the way I think Councilmember Medina asked. I mean, my, my questions are, um, you know, uh, there, there'd have to be covenants in, in this agreement like that all the units would be rented and occupied before a certificate of occupancy on the new building. I'd want to see that they were, the vacancy rate stayed low and that I would want to see conditions of approval about extending the protection or lifetime or the longevity of the affordability covenant if they have vacancies that exceed those, um, those agreed upon terms. Um, I would like, like to see a marketing plan for how they're going to market it to the target population. Um, I wouldn't agree to less than a 55 year period. I want it to be in line with the Affordable Housing Program for the city. Um, the, there would need to be some sort of understanding about not demolishing the building. And this went to Ally's question, I think, about useful life of the building. Um, how, if there couldn't be any repurposing of the units, there would need to be conditions about acts of God. So rather than leaving it to landlord or tenant law, if the building was destroyed by earthquake and the tenants have to figure it out and they only have some, certain protections, these are assets now of the city's affordable housing stock. I'd want to know where they were going to be housed. Um, present day rent, there was a discussion about the rents versus BMR rents. Um, I have, I have feelings about that. The Emeryville rent system, I think, is the better system for us. Um, I'd like to see how we were going to amortize the benefit to ensure that the city is realizing the present day value of $2 million, having been spent over 55 years, right? $2 million, it doesn't come to us today, but is like, just dribbles in over 55 years. Should, we should get whatever that actuarialized amount is in, in, in an agreement.
Big ones?
Yes, we need to really make sure, because to me, that's the big benefit to the developer, is the developers have to pay us cash. And I'm open to creative proposals, but I, that doesn't mean I want a $2 million amount on the valuation of these affordable units. I would like to see something that is going to actually look like what $2 million value is today if it was paid out, you know, today as opposed to over 55 years. Um, I'd like to know what they're going to do to renovate the existing units. I've been in them. Um, and so they're a very raw shell and they were designed as live workspaces. Are there, what kind of upgrades are going to be made to them before we put them as city affordable housing stock? Um, they've already said that they would agree to a covenant on the property. I think that the discount rate would have to be changed. It would have to be not less than two or two and a half percent, um, higher than whatever the, the rents are going to be. Um, and then I'd like to see us use the net present value calculation, which I understand that the applicant has already agreed to. Um, but I would agree with Member Medina, I, I wouldn't do this for four, four units. Um, I, I personally don't need it to be nine, I need it to work. Um, and I, I, but I, four is not a, a use of our time.
Go down to eight.
Very good. Um, Member Donahue, did you have any, uh, thing on your list that would be a requirement to keep you at yes?
Well, everything that, uh, was just mentioned by Councilmember Bowders and previously by Councilmember Medina are great points. Let's hear from Wareham right now, how do they feel about what was just suggested? Can you get close to what we just said? Do you give us some positive action right now that, yeah, like, we can agree that, that is worth us pursuing?
Um, I see a raised hand from our planning director, Charlie Bryant. I'd like to give him the floor. I believe he's an attendee, so he might need to be unmuted by the host. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Martinez, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I just want to clarify one point. Uh, I don't believe we're talking about $2 million. I believe we're talking about $6 million. Because, uh, the planning regulations stipulate that there is 10 bonus points for each 1% of construction valuation. And Wareham is, I believe, seeking 30 bonus points for this benefit. That means 3% of construction valuation. They have indicated that 1% of construction valuation is $2 million. If they're seeking 30 bonus points at 3% of construction valuations, that is $6 million. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay, thank you. And I want to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to Vice Mayor Donahue on, um, their ability to meet the standard set forward by council, um, in considering, uh, these bonus points as a community benefit.
I don't know.
Good to speak.
I'm happy to speak. Rich Robbins here.
Sure.
Our proposal was to first take the temperature. The idea is to be creative. This isn't, you know, obviously, all the points you mentioned have to be dealt with. It's not about prolonging a negotiation. It's about finding a creative recipe to make things work. The number of units we originally had targeted were nine units. I know that they put what Claudia and, and Maru put out were examples of how this might work. But the idea was that we were going to be more than 20% of our existing units. We were going to fix up the existing building and it has to be fixed up in order to make the new building work. But the idea is still what I talked about at the very beginning. Combining the new and the old, putting them in concert for the future. So we certainly are positioned to protect live workspace and we're happy to de-restrict and negotiate in good faith. This isn't, you know, rocket science, to be honest. Most of these things can be worked out quantitatively. But the idea more important is if you're in favor of at least exploring this, I think it's something that's worthwhile from our standpoint and certainly the community and the cities.
Well, having heard our concerns, Rich, thank you for, um, for being, for entertaining our concerns as we entertain this as a possibility. Um, colleagues, do we feel ready to move on to the second question now that, um, everything's been said? And, and thank you, Rich, for restating that you guys intended to do, um, 20%, which is the nine, nine units. So, um, colleagues, can we move on to the second question? Very good. Staff, would you kindly bring up the question menu? So do we want to follow the Affordable Housing Program guidelines or require a modified set of guidelines for the developer to comply with? I've, I've already stated that I'm, um, interested in our staff doing as little work as possible, although it will still be, uh, some degree of work. Um, so I'm, I'm interested in, in our Affordable Housing Program guidelines, who are, um, can we take down the slides so we can have this conversation, please? Thank you. Colleagues, does anyone else want to pipe in? Uh, Member Medina is in support of staying with the AHP, Member Bowders?
Uh, yeah, with a caveat, which is I, I'm not, I don't have that whole plan in front of me and I listed a number of items and I'm not sure if any of the things I listed are inconsistent with the plan. So generally speaking, yes, I support the AHP. But if there were one or two provisions in there that need to be updated to reflect those practices, I would want to see that. So that's my caveat.
Very good. And I think that's understood. Um, I think it's more of the AHP versus the plan that was proposed, um, that's in alignment with different numbers, um, that came from the applicant. So appreciate that. And if staff could bring up the, um, the slide one last time for our third question. If yes, does the council agree with the methodology outlined by the applicant to calculate the value of the proposed flexible community benefit? Thank you. Does anyone have any comments on this?
I would like to see more, um, a full presentation and more research done on this because it's not like an A or B. It's, it's actually a multiple choice question with different variables. As Valerie had the side by side, there are different combinations of assumptions that could be made. And so I don't recall exactly what the applicant had off, off the top. I know there were a couple of things I agreed with and a couple I thought would be better being the Emeryville model, um, the Emeryville rents, for example, as opposed to TCAC's rents. So I, I would like to ask if, Madam Mayor, if we're going to bring this back to ask staff to bring back kind of a a hybrid chart of what it could look like so that we could maybe look at what is within the realm of things the applicant likes and the city would be willing to do.
I think we understand that, that's what the council prefers.
Very good. Member Medina?
I, I very much support that because I think I need to really think through the details about a lot more. But I wanted to note that I found the, um, presentation, the staff presentation extremely helpful for me to wrap my head around all the variables. So thank you, Valerie, for putting together such a fantastic and thorough presentation on that.
Yeah, and I will, uh, Member Bowders?
I just had a question in light of Charlie's, um, helpful note. So most of the preliminary, um, presentation stuff about valuation showed kind of a range of affordability, like what the value of that affordability would be. And if there's a $6 million benefit, um, and we're doing the flexible benefits, is it reasonable for us to then, um, to, to assume that we could put, as since we're, we're negotiating a flexible benefit program, we could say, um, we would like to do this program and to Member Medina's point, if we wanted to have some amount of the remaining balance of the funds be used towards a specific capital project, that could be a negotiated term. If we wanted to say it will go into a fund that supports park rehabilitation, we could do that. Is, is that on the table, um, staff as well?
If you could also direct that to the, well, Charlie has his hand up, I'm going to step in.
Charlie, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just note that the city's, um, uh, community development bonus program has six categories of community benefits, as Maru, uh, indicated in her presentation, in addition to this flexible community benefit. And I believe most of the things I've heard the council members mention would probably fall into one of the other categories, specifically public improvements. That's a very broad category. It could be used for Doyle Street improvements or whatever. Undergrounding of utilities is also another category. Um, my understanding is that the applicant is looking for 30 bonus points, uh, from this, uh, flexible community benefit. That still leaves another 20 bonus points that they would need to earn from some other category. So if, if you wanted to direct them to get those other 20 bonus points by, say, doing improvements on Doyle Street or whatever, that would well be, with, that would be well within the parameters of the program. And I don't think you'd really have to negotiate that. It's just, uh, another item that could be added to the list of benefits.
So just to follow up on that, Charlie, thank you for that. Uh, I guess the question is just a little more specific than in light of what you said. If we, they could, I think you're right, like, there's the public improvements, uh, fund, for example. Uh, we could, they could just put money into that, but it wouldn't necessarily guarantee it goes to a specific project we wanted. So could we actually put a designation on the funding to say funding will be paid into this fund, but it will be used for capital improvement projects, list item number X? Can we do that?
Sure. Typically, um, reapprovals would include a specific, specific project or projects. You may recall the Sherwin-Williams project, uh, had a long list of public improvements that were to be funded, uh, through the development bonus points for that project. And they were very explicitly listed along with their estimated construction cost. So you can do that. Alternatively, I suppose you could just tell them to put a certain amount of money into the CIP budget.
Thank you, Charlie, very helpful.
All right, thank you.
Could I just say one other thing, Madam Mayor? Well, uh, I just don't, I don't want to lose this point. Um, I think the council is clear that if you ultimately decide not to go with the flexible community benefit, then this project doesn't require city council approval. It only requires planning commission approval and it could potentially come to the council on appeal. And we've been very careful to focus this study session specifically on the flexible community benefit so that if you ultimately decide not to do that, you will not, uh, have an issue of, you know, being biased about any of the other aspects of the project if the project should end up coming to you on appeal. Um, so I think you're all clear on that. It just seems to me that at this point, you haven't really said yes or no to this flexible community benefit proposal. So if we were to bring this back to a future meeting, I, for one, would not encourage you to review the entire project at that meeting because there's still a potential that you might not approve the flexible community benefit. And, and then it would go back to the planning commission. So until you've made a decision one way or the other about whether you're going to entertain this, I think you should focus just on this flexible community benefit issue.
Thank you, I appreciate that framing, Charlie. Um, colleagues, is there any more discussion or questions? And staff, do you feel that you have the direction that you need to move forward today?
Valerie, do you have any additional clarifying questions?
I think I'm clear. Thank you.
Maru?
Very good.
I'm clear as well, thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Now, I, I wanted to thank Maru and Valerie for a very, um, clear and concise, uh, report and presentation tonight. Um, thank you and thank you to the applicant for joining us tonight and answering all of our questions. So with that, if you go ahead and close this meeting. This meeting is adjourned at, um, 6:39 PM. Um, and I will rely on my clerk to let me know when we are ready to begin our next meeting, which is a special meeting of the Emeryville City Council.
One moment while I prepare for the next group of folks. Okay, Madam Mayor, we are ready to call to order.
Very good. The time is 6:40 PM. Good evening, everyone. I'm now convening a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Today is Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. And who's there with me is a recent introductory remark. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the brown ass waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. And those brown ass waivers are due to expire on September 31st, which means that our first likely in-person meeting is going to be held on October 5th. City Hall is now reopened to the public. And you can check our website at emeryville.org to see our, um, newly revised hours. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being live streamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comments by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emery emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature available on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as key notifications and on social media. So I will turn to the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here.
Next up, we have approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
And I'll go ahead and second it. Oops, sorry. We have a motion by Member Bowders and a second by myself. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Next up, we've got ex parte communication. Colleagues, do you have anything to report for this meeting? Member Bowders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've had conversations with applicants Eugene Swaye and Jack Gisone.
And, thank you. I have had a conversation with applicant Al Dram. Okay, now I'll start to report. So now it's time for public comments. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. In light of the hour, we are running about 43 minutes behind. I'm going to limit public comment at this meeting. Two minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, please press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment cards or whether anyone has raised their hands and made audio comments.
I don't have any comment cards and I don't see any raised hands at this time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I will go ahead and close public comment at this time, and we will go ahead and go forward with our interview process for applicants for the Planning Commission. And if you bear with me one moment, I am just looking for my questions list for the applicants, and we're going to call them in order as they appear on the agenda. So please bear with me because I have lost my questions. I have another in my email because they just got emailed to me in just a moment. Thank you, Sherry, for emailing these questions. So we're going to start off with the first applicant, which listed, we've got Mr. Al Dram, and we'll start with a short personal statement. And first, I'll give my clerk a moment to make sure that Mr. Dram is in the room and unmuted.
Okay, he looks ready.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dram, why are you interested in serving on the city's planning commission? In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, and experience, including any past civic involvement.
Hi, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Al Dram, and a little bit of background about myself, I have studied architecture for 12 years, including bachelor and master in architecture and studies in PhD for visual design. And I have 14 years' experience doing practice in architecture and five records being a business owner and three of those records, my office located in Emeryville. I was so lucky to be here and that helped us to grow very faster than before. And the reason I think that I would like to join as the commissioner is because the city helped us to grow very much and I'd like to do something in return and put all of my knowledge, information, and I have, I have an experience to help the city to grow better than what it is right now.
Very good. Thank you so much. Question number two, what do you see as the role of the planning commissioner?
So generally speaking, I think planning commissioners should have a better understanding, deep understanding of general plan and economic development strategy that previously you have provided, and you need to advise, support, the mayor, and the city department. And when there's new projects coming like today, we need to review the project, go through the processes, make sure that those projects are analyzed and are towarded a general goal in the general plan, and also work with other commissioners. My role is here, I think, mostly be in architectural side, artistic side, and see how the society works with architecture, structure and building works with people. I think buildings are without people are only material, and the community and people give the life to it. I would like to focus more on the big picture and see how we can meet the law, including the federal and state law, and how we can apply the general plan to the projects that are coming to the plan.
Question number three, can, describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city in the past two years?
So I have checked the projects that have been approved or worked on past two years. I think there are three types of projects. One is housing, the other one is economic development, and the other one is public art. For housing, I think there is the address 367 Adeline, which is 100% 90 unit, seven floor project, which is very interesting. And for economic development, I think 4700 Mixus Project in San Pablo, that's a very big project by a biomed reality, and I think it's going to be a very big impact on the income of the city and the rendering, that's going to change the look of the city. And for the public art, I just seen the 4600, it's more toward the art, and I think there is much more work on the art part of the general.
Can you give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or the community process, and please explain why?
Yes, I think 600 San Pablo Avenue is a very good sample. When I was checking the meeting minutes, I see the council meeting voted on having more mid-range income for it. My perspective and action was like seeing that it's good to meet the different level of income in one location, building, or neighbor. I think having isolating lower income doesn't help much, although we are trying to help them to have a housing, but if you isolate them, it's going to make a situation that they're going to isolate themselves from the whole city, and that location is going to be a hub where people don't want to go and visit anymore. So in my opinion, it's fair to have a mid-income rate, and I've seen many projects that they minimize a lot of that, that it's okay, this is 20% below market, 30% mid-market, and the rest is a market rate. And that helps people to grow. I think the people who are on a lower end are going to connect with other parts of the community and try to learn and improve. I see in this project, you wanted to have the mid-rate including the built. So this is a great example that toward what I see is the true and right way to do.
Great, thank you. Now I'll open it up to see if my colleagues have any follow-up questions. Colleagues, do you have any specific questions for this applicant for a planning commission? Member Bowders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Dram, my question for you is whether or not you're familiar with city's Measure C and the Affordable Housing Expenditure Plan that was approved earlier this year? Are you familiar with it?
I am not.
Okay, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Very good. Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dram. We are going to move on to our next applicant. Give our clerk a moment to bring them into the room and unmute them. Looks like we have Mr. Jack Gisone. Welcome, Jack.
Hi.
Jack, are you unmuted? Yeah, very good. I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to start with the first question. This is the short personal statement. Why are you interested in serving on the city's planning commission? In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, and experience, including any past civic involvement.
Yes, thank you. I'm interested in serving on the planning commission because I think the planning commission plays a big role in shaping the community, the quality of life and community in Emeryville, and I'd like to participate in this. I'm a big believer in the importance of strong communities. I think it's essential to improving our society, and that's at the heart of why I'm interested in serving. I have an educational background as a non-practicing attorney and civic involvement that I think would help in this role. My legal training is useful in understanding regulatory issues and also in creating structured agreements, communicating complex concepts clearly, unambiguously, and concisely. Since I moved here in 2013, I've been involved in discussions around the Sherwin-Williams Development, which is on the block next to where I live. I saw an opportunity to improve the plan as it was when I moved here, and I ended up talking to neighbors, the city council, and planning commission on a number of occasions, and joining a neighborhood association, Park Avenue Residence Committee, which I now co-chair, that has had active ongoing talks with the developer to make sure the community has input into the project so that it meets the community's needs. I ended up reviewing and commenting on a lot of development-related documents in this process. I've also been on the Park and Rec Committee since 2017 and was vice chair for a year and chair for another in that process. I learned a lot about Emeryville, a lot about the neighborhoods, a lot about the processes that go on in city government and how we affect change and get input from the communities. And these experiences have all given me an understanding of the stages large project planning goes through in the city and the ways different community members participate in that.
Very good. Thank you, Jack. What do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
Okay, I think the definition slash purpose description on the planning commission webpage describes this well, the role well, stating that the commissioner is to initiate, conduct studies with respect to those matters affecting the orderly growth and development of the city, to make recommendations to the city council with respect to these matters, and to make the necessary findings and grant and deny various use permits and other planning entitlements. And I see a number of things as being important in that process. I think listening to the concern of various community members, weighing those concerns carefully, and making sure they're fully taken into account in the decision-making process is important. I also think that it's important for commissioners to think strategically and keep sight of the city's long-term goals in order to make sure that today's decisions provide a good foundation for future generations to build on and aren't obstacles to that. I also think it's important for commissioners to become familiar with the issues involved that the commissioner is looking at, and there's a lot of learning involved in the role. And finally, I think it's important for commissioners to clearly articulate the basis for decisions that the commission makes so the general public and other parties see a process that is open and fair.
Well said. Thank you. Can you describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city in the past two years?
Sure. I refer, in my role as a Park and Recreation Committee member, I refer to the Park and Rec Public Spaces sections of the plan regularly, and that's what I'm most familiar with. I did read over the remainder in preparation for tonight. It's a document required by state law that requires the city's actions to be consistent with the general plan that's comprehensive, internally consistent, and a long range of the scope of its planning. Like other parts of city government, the planning commission needs to adhere to the document. State law requires general plans to address seven topics: land use, circulation, open space, conservation, noise, safety, and housing. And Emeryville's general plan has two additional topics of urban design and sustainability, which I think are important. Within each of these sections, the general plan describes the city's general goals, policies, and actions pertaining to these topics. And these goals, policies, and actions seem to vary from one part of the city to the next in order to respect the nature of different sections of the city and to maintain unique characteristics to those sections. I don't have it memorized, but I do know the general plan well enough to know where to look for answers to different questions. One other planning document that I find of interest is the 40th Street Concept Plan. I think it's something that can improve mass transit and bike pedestrian experience, helping the city further some of its environmental goals, and I find that to be pretty important.
Great, thank you. Can you give an example of an economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process, and please explain why?
Certainly. There's a number of developments that exemplify some of my views, but since I'm most familiar with Sherwin-Williams, that's what I'll discuss. The development involves a number of things that I find important. First, it involves a lot of community input and overtime. That input resulted in a plan that meets the community's needs better than what would have happened without that input. Secondly, it brings three and a half acres of park and open spaces to the community that will be connected with a greenway and connected to, via Horton Landing with Bay Street, which is a big plus in a city that's trying hard to add park space. And the plan has evolved from originally being a number of small open spaces to one large contiguous open space that seems to meet the community's needs better. Also, it adds 87 housing units for low-income residents to our community with proximity to public transit, park space, and art gallery. And those are amenities that aren't always available to low-income housing, but should be, in my opinion. And in addition, it introduces developer-funded shuttle bus to and from West Oakland Park, helping further the city's environmental goals and hopefully leading to more mass transit cities for this particular neighborhood. It also communicates, contributes to the community's culture and public spaces with an art gallery. Finally, it does one, accomplishes one of the goals of the general plan of subdividing large industrial area blocks with additional streets and a cut-through through the existing building to kind of make ingress into the public space easier and make that more open, and adds population density to part of the city that I think might make it more possible to have greater use of mass transit, support local businesses, and things like that. See some real efficiency there.
Thank you. Now I'll open it up to follow-up questions from my colleagues. Colleagues, are there any questions to this applicant? Member Bowders?
Thank you. Jack, are you familiar with Emeryville Measure C and the city's Affordable Housing Expenditure Plan?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and can you tell us anything you like about it or how you view or understand the planning commission's role in implementing it?
I like it a lot. When it was unveiled, I was pretty excited about it. I think that that is an important part of making our community stronger is to make it more inclusive economically. I like that it emphasizes both production of affordable housing and preservation of existing affordable housing because I feel like production is often necessary because preservation failed, and that involves a lot of trauma and loss. And so to protect existing affordable housing is as high of a priority as producing more. I think the planning commission needs to be open to make sure the projects don't endanger existing affordable housing. I also think that it has a role in making sure that the amenities that are available to people in existing affordable housing are improved without displacing people, which often happens. Improvement tends to quite often displace people. And also in making sure that affordable housing is built and maintained to the extent
And also in making sure that affordable housing is built and maintained to the extent it's possible. Thank you, I have no more questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions for this applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Gisone. We will be moving on to the next applicant. I'll give the clerk a moment to bring them in.
Sway, yes. Yes, am I being heard?
You are heard, thank you. So we'll start with the first question, Mr. Sway. Why are you interested in serving on the City Planning Commission? In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, and experience, including any past civic involvement.
Good evening, city council and city staff. Thank you for allowing me to attend and to be a part of this event. I want to serve on the Planning Commission because with my local and international experience, education, and real estate relationships, knowledge of natural disaster preparedness measures, and design solutions, I can make a significant impact on helping our city reach its general plan goals and prepare for future climate change disasters such as tsunamis, earthquakes, wildfires, sea level rise, minute plastic particle pollution, and temperature rise. I have written seven international books on these subjects, warning readers about the increasing acceleration of these impending catastrophes and illustrating solutions. In the 1980s, I completed two master's degrees in architecture and city and regional planning, and an interdisciplinary doctorate in architecture and education from UC Berkeley, and was a research scholar at Harvard University developing prototype disaster-resistant building materials. I worked for the Bay Area Open Space Council, creating the 20-year plan for developing the San Francisco Bay, its population growth, traffic growth, building growth, land conservation, and city expansion. I am a 33-year resident and business owner in Emeryville, raising two generations of children and grandchildren. I was the president of the Emory High School PTA, founding member of the Emeryville Community Organic Garden, a member of the Watergate Finance Committee, taught architecture and ecology at San Francisco State University, UC Berkeley, Caltech, and four of China's elite universities. For 22 years, I worked part-time in China, learning China's secrets for their spectacular success with livability, affordable housing, environmental preservation, and socially activating imaginative city design. I have 40 years of professional experience as an architect, professor, and licensed building contractor. My national and international experience emphasizes affordable housing, livability, climate change, sea level rise, natural disaster design, economies of construction, family-friendly neighborhoods, and cityscapes that speak to long-term living. As our city's planning commissioner, I will use this knowledge to monitor and critique developers by speaking their language of construction to save money for our city, support climate change projects to save lives, and help set ground rules for development emphasizing aesthetics, innovation, affordability, environmental disaster mitigation, safety, and active human interaction.
Thank you, Mr. Sway. What do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
It's an adjudication position. We have to interpret existing law and make judgments for the city to follow through on existing ordinances, consider the city's general plan and various rules of zoning. We must interpret the rules and develop possible alternative solutions if needed. We find ways to apply the city's rules evenly to everyone and envision possibilities within the existing rules. We contribute new ideas and solutions, and as an architect, I have the ability to clearly visualize three-dimensional space. For instance, the previous city commissioner, Phil Banter, was an architect that greatly aided the planning process for the Sherwin-Williams project by showing how we could have a continuation of our street grid through the first-floor level of the building by having a well-designed pass-through that allows pedestrians and cyclists to continue through to the park and show drivers where our new park is. I hope to be able to find similar solutions to future city projects. I understand that planning commissioners have many other issues that we're responsible for, such as initiating and conducting studies regarding city growth, FAR issues, develop city recommendations to the city council, agree or disagree to make a motion and what parameters, consider bird migration paths, tree cutting, sustainability excellence, residential building reviews to demolish or not, landscape design, determine signage, evaluate condo projects, create city files in a project, and consider sustainability excellence. We have to examine the municipal code, accessibility issues, building heights, blair, to approve or not the cutting of trees, evaluate city projects, egress and accessibility issues, landscape design, grant or deny variances, use permits, planning entitlements, and we must be the guardians of public safety. In addition, I feel it is extremely important that our planning commissioners fully comprehend the looming dangers of climate change, which are already causing accelerating statewide wildfires, sea level rise, dissemination of minute plastic pollution, water and soil contamination, and our city is currently in an active tsunami evacuation zone. My role as a planning commissioner would be to include using my expertise to develop solutions, to foresee, adapt, mitigate, and protect our city from these imminent disasters.
Thank you. Please describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city in the past two years.
Well, the city's general plan is a vision on community desires and goals. It's a kind of checklist of city aspirations. It's the result of extensive public outreach by the General Plan Update Steering Committee through surveys, multiple workshops, and monthly meetings. Community issues and desires were documented and later used as references while developing the plan. As the plan evolved, it was tested for impacts on various factors, including traffic and the city's economic stability. The vision is: preservation and enhancement of existing neighborhoods, four neighborhood centers to serve local community needs, regional retail districts along Fortieth and Shellmount Streets, transit-oriented development, Amtrak, and at Fortieth and St. Pablo, redevelopment of shopping centers into vibrant urban neighborhoods, expanded street grid emphasizing alternative modes of travel and pedestrian amenities, two large community parks with playing fields, and east-west greenways celebrating Temescal Creek, gateways to the city on Powell Street and St. Pablo Avenue, and sustainability and design excellence throughout Emeryville.
Thank you. Can you please give an example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process? And please explain why.
Yes, I like the Sherwin-Williams project because it took its time to know the concerns of the city, to assess the city's zoning ordinances and municipal code, to reach out to the city's populace and implement their ideas, and consider public use accommodations, relevancy, and the day-to-day qualities in function of the site, the site's limitations and potential, and the neighborhood benefits of the building for present-day and future use. There is lots of public input in this design formation. It shows conscientiousness towards functional use and relationship to community enhancement, age group accommodations, sports and fitness activities, and healthy lifestyle amenities. It has a generous recreation and children's play area. It ties into Bay Street, and it creates a new park on the east side with lots of open space. It promises a future shuttle to the West Oakland Bar station, and its landscaping and tree selection is well thought through. Its outdoor design makes an effort to create a variety of contextual spaces, lively and colorful, and accommodate broad age groups, and the design considers stormwater treatment, lighting pollution, outdoor toilet facilities, ample trash receptacles, drinking fountains, and raised garden beds for gardening. It considers special users such as pets and dogs and bicyclists, and has ample space for seating and social gatherings. There's a variety of permanent and movable outdoor furnishings for social interaction. It illustrates the city's general plan by enhancing the existing neighborhood and providing an innovative use of the expanded street grid. It offers the neighborhood a variety of spaces where people matter, and it expresses a compassionate and empathic quality of urban space. With a recent public meeting called about the contamination and toxic waste cleanup of the Sherwin-Williams site, as a planning commissioner of our city and as a licensed architect and building contractor, I would have clearly warned the Sherwin-Williams project manager, the project developer, and our city council to completely mitigate and remediate the toxicity of the site before proceeding with building approval. This illustrates the dire need for an experienced environmental science architect, building contractor on the Planning Commission to guard and steward the safety and welfare of Emeryville's citizens and the integrity of our city council.
Thank you, Mr. Sway. Now I'll open it up for follow-up questions from my colleagues. Mr. Bowder.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Mr. Sway, are you familiar with Emeryville Measure C and the city's housing expenditure plan?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and what would you like to tell us, or, sorry, could you tell us what you like about it, and also what do you view or understand the Planning Commission's role to be in relation to it?
Well, I love it that Measure C is kind of a moral imperative, to want residents to live in safe, decent, affordable homes and still have enough money for groceries and other basic needs. Providing affordable local housing and permanent housing to the homeless, I think, is a morally supportive endeavor, and it helps low- and middle-income households purchase homes and stay in the community, which I think is a wonderful goal for the city of Emeryville. I'm also supportive of Resolution 18-20, which approves issuance of an Affordable Housing Bond, and also Resolution Number 18-21, demanding the development of affordable housing projects and financing. I think affordable housing is a much-needed entity in the city of Emeryville, and doing it through new construction, rehabilitation of existing housing stock, and low-interest homeowner loans is a wonderful effort to support Measure C, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you, no more questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, any further questions for this applicant? And I'm going to apologize to the last two applicants. I've been glad to give them their time for closing remarks, but I will come back to them, to Mr. Dram and Mr. Gisone for closing remarks, but for now, I will allow Mr. Sway. Is there anything you'd like to add as a closing remark to assist the city council in our deliberations?
Yes. As an environmental science-oriented licensed architect, licensed building contractor, and city planner with a PhD, I've learned the ways that US and Chinese planning succeeds in city development, and through my many relationships here and abroad, I can capture the interest of developers to Emeryville. I speak the language of real estate developers and the building trades and can show them that design matters, affordability matters, livability matters, disaster mitigation matters, innovation and safety matters. I will educate developers about the need for a new park, suggest universally attractive gathering features like waterfalls, multi-level walkways, stairways that light up of color and musical tones, and other international city planning features that are proven to attract people and can inject new life into our city. I'm a supporter of affordable housing, Measure C, and the two resolutions passed in 2018 and 2021. Affordable housing, as I mentioned, is a moral imperative to our city, and I will encourage developers to construct affordable housing and make it distinctive, unique, exciting, and imaginative. I can see three-dimensional design possibilities and climate change destruction that others cannot. As a professor and author on architectural design innovation, climate change, and natural disaster mitigation, I bring the ability to see beyond the conventional and find ways to educate developers and foster our own planning commissioners to realize a project's optimal design potential, public safety, and anticipate climate change destruction. As a Watergate resident, I represent 27% of our city's population, and I speak fluent Chinese, which is the second-most spoken language in Emeryville. I can find solutions to Emeryville's looming calamities of sea level rise, drought, wildfires, plastic particle pollution, soil contamination, CO2 discharge, and our city is currently in a tsunami evacuation zone. Preparation begins now, not when disaster hits. I can attract national and international developers to participate in our city's public discussion. The city's future is dependent upon its continued positive development trajectory, and much of this is construction-based, which is my 40 years of expertise. Whatever the city needs to construct, I can find ways to do it inexpensively, address environmental consequences and affordability. With a 40-year proven record of seeing beyond the conventional and preparing for our city's threatening future challenges, I support our city's aspiring moniker, Emeryville, the city of arts and innovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sway. I'd now like to ask our city clerk if he can bring back applicant Dram and Gisone to give their closing comments. And again, my apologies to both of them. I'd like to provide you with a bit of time. If there are any closing remarks to assist the city council in our deliberations, and I'd first like to have Mr. Dram afford you that opportunity. Go ahead.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Do you have any closing remarks to assist the city council in our deliberations?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dram. Can you bring in Mr. Gisone? Jack, you're unmuted, go ahead.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Not really much to say, besides, in addition to community building and transportation and other issues that I mentioned earlier, I think the sustainability and environmental concerns need to really be paramount in any development that the city does. Energy consumption is a big thing that we need to be attentive to, and we just generally need to be aware of those things. Other than that, I'd just like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gisone. Okay, Sherry, if you could bring in our last applicant, Commissioner Young.
Commissioner Young, you're unmuted. I'll start with our first question. This is a short personal statement. Why are you interested in serving on the City Planning Commission? In your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, and experience, including any past civic involvement.
Well, my name is Tito Young. I've been working with this city of Emeryville for quite a while. I was part of the Economic Housing Committee, started off there, and I moved from there to basically as a planning commissioner. My actual reason for being part of the Planning Commission is because I feel like I'm a voice of families, a voice of people who are both young and old, people who are all different kinds of ages, people who have to actually live and use these buildings, the janitors, the people driving in, the deliverer persons, the persons who actually have to deal with the spaces before and after, or currently and after, on these kinds of spaces. And I think I try to look at a project in terms of a large, long-windowed area. My background includes virtual reality. Currently, I act as what the equivalent to a building analyst for disasters and those kinds of issues that happen throughout the country. I'm a federal worker with them as well. My tasks include recovery for both fires, recoveries for both hurricanes, floods, wind damage, tornadoes. I've seen it all. I interact directly with the people who experience those sort of things. I also have a variation in background in architecture that has gone back at least 20 to 30 years. It includes houses and all types of construction. I'm simply a designer that kind of looks past what the norm might be. I try to find solutions built into results that have been presented before. I try to find solutions that are fresh and unique and find solutions in that sense. And so my tendency is to be more of a visionary and visualize concepts in larger pictures that would be able to communicate with my fellow constituents and those that want to be able to work with the projects. want to be able to work with the projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. What do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
It's a very interesting role. There's a, you, you have, on one side, developers, and on this side, you have the populations, the families. On the third side, you have the designers themselves who actually want to present and make a mark. And then, of course, you have those that want to approve or disapprove of particular set of projects. The role of a planning commissioner is, I feel, much more than just housing, or just much more than just the, a singleization of a project. I think there's a lot of things that go on. We have people who have restaurants here. We have people who have, who need signage. We have people who want to take homes and include them and build on them. We also have housing, but we also have people who want to make apartments and labs and chemistry labs. And we want people to, and we have people who have to drive their cars, a two-and-a-half-mile area that intersects our city. A, a, a planning commissioner is a person who looks at all of that and doesn't just singularize or singularly come up with a solution and call themselves, oh, I'm a presto magician. Instead, they're supposed to think out of the box, and they're supposed to see things beyond than just what the norm is. They, they want to look for something fresh. They want to look for something different. They want to look for, they want to travel a lot. Planning commissioners look at other cities. They read a lot. They, they look at what other cities do. They learn from mistakes. They grow from mistakes, and they try to do something really fresh in their own city. A planning commissioner also uses the regulations that do come in through general plans and housing elements and all this sort of documents that we could write and review. However, none of it means anything unless you actually understand it and can show the developers, hey, this is what I'm, this is what our overall vision is. It's, 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 yes, there's, there's other kinds of incentives that might make a planning commissioner be a planning commissioner, but the, the role is to think beyond what everybody else does and then to include them all when you're thinking of it.
Thank you. Can you describe your knowledge of the city general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years?
Sure, the general plan, dealing with land use, dealing with transportation, parks, open spaces, public facilities, sustainability. The general plan is a, is a, is, is a guideline. It's a guideline that I think if somebody makes an application to the city, that you hand it to them. But it's, it's, it's a guideline, that's what it is. It's supposed to, it's supposed to be used as a, as a form like what we want our city to become. We want, we want those that bring projects here that are really interesting, that pull families together, that pull workers here, that keep labor in our area, that actually deals with those that work around us and, and our neighbors. A, a general plan is, is a language, it understands pattern language, it understands what you see when you're walking down the sidewalk, it interacts with you. It's the, it's the, it's a concept that, it, it involves a person on a, on a one-to-one basis. And without it, it might be without any kind of idea, but with it, you can have open spaces and you can have parks, and you can understand the lands better, you can actually have sustainability with buildings, you can bring up environmental issues, you can carry concepts from large, urgent small, from signs to large buildings, from roads to sidewalks to bus stops. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. Give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process. Please explain why.
I'm actually taken by the attempts by the different kinds of new homes that are being built in Emeryville. These are the, these are the real people that actually have issues like ADUs, and they have additions to their homes, and they're trying to come up with a second level, or trying to take their property and make a quad out of it. These are the people who actually have to use real money that comes out of their pocket, and they've got to figure out like how to make ends meet by development of their, at their own scale. Yes, there's large projects, we got 5,600 San Pablo, we've got the Sherwin-Williams project. I mean, those, those projects do community involvement. I love those projects, those are great. They're interesting, they're neat. I'd like to see one of those and not five, I'd just like anything else. I think creativity is, is important in that. But I think, I, I'd like to give housing to those that are in the city, those that want to do something that are homes, to actually bring more people and more families together.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any follow-up questions from council for Commissioner Young? Member Bowders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Young, are you familiar with Emeryville Measure C and the city's housing expenditure plan?
Of course, I was, I helped write that.
Okay. And what do you like about it and what do you view as the role of the planning commission in implementing it?
Well, Measure C is a, is a form to get, is, is a wonderful way to define a, it, it's a way to define how we use our tax dollars to kind of maximize a, a benefit for the city. It's a relationship between class differences that we need to bring together. People are people and they're equalized, and I think Measure C does that. And I think that's exactly what I like most about that particular idea, because for once, a person who is homeless or doesn't have that, that, that high-end dollars and being in the Bay Area can actually stay here and have a family. Or it might be a middle-class person that has the ability to be here and find tax dollars that are being used around him, not necessarily for him. And it's those that are around him that I think benefits the most because they're the ones that stick around. If you think about it, housing might be available for a person for a couple of years, but who's the neighbor? How's he going to interact with that? And I think Measure C does that in really well, and I'm glad we're using tax dollars to try to maximize a benefit there.
Thank you, no more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Young, are there anything, is there anything you'd like to add as a closing remark to assist the council in our deliberations?
What we do here, all our time that we spend on this, is for our children, it's for our future, it's for our growth, it's for our safety, it's for our understanding of like what we want to, what we want to visualize the next picture. I, I have dreams and visions of burying AD and have a bridge over it, or have a cover over it, so that way there'd be massive parks. I have visions of actually connecting our city with more parks or more waterways that we can have access to. I'd, I'd like to see, understanding how we could revisit some of those projects that we built where people collect each other, where they can conduct free speech and feel like they have a, a place to voice ideas. And as a planning commissioner, whenever there's opportunities for those kind of, those kinds of spaces to be created, and as projects are being presented to us, and as development happens, whether we're doing something on the general plan that has to do with increasing a sidewalk to maybe opening a public space in a private building, so that way it's shared, possible balconies, possible walkways that interact and interconnect cities, to develop a strong node between our city, Oakland, and Berkeley. And that's how I would think of it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Young, appreciate your answers. And at this time, I will turn to our city clerk to see if anyone from the public has submitted a public comment or if anyone has a hand raised. I will remind the public joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to raise your hand. And if you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. And I'll turn it over to the clerk to unmute those speakers, speakers as we are running fine. And as I stated earlier in this meeting, public speakers will be allowed two minutes at this time.
Okay, I have no comment cards for this meeting, however, there are two raised hands. I will first allow Brian Donahue to speak for two minutes. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I would like to just state for the record here that fatuous comments were made here tonight regarding Park. That stands for the Park Avenue Residents Committee. Statements about Park being a community engagement and community involvement committee that's supposed to help the community members visualize or realize the community. Park is expressly not that. It's a closed-door, private group of people that, for instance, the resident committee group, resident group called Rural Residence United for Level 4 of Emeryville Work, that group was left out and expressly not permitted to go to a Park Avenue committee meeting. It's about regarding Sherwin-Williams, for instance, Sherwin-Williams project. Other private, just citizens, just community members also have not, were not, and have not been able to go to Park meetings. So, they're, because they're closed door. I see, I've always seen Park as more of a real estate investment group, a group of people interested in protecting their real estate investment or adding to their real estate investment. I don't see it as what it was characterized as, as a community protection group that's interested in community engagement. I think that's just, just factually incorrect. They have closed-door meetings, cannot be construed as the way it was construed here tonight. I just want to be on the record, the Park is not a community engagement or community engaging organization. Thank you very much, that's all I want.
Okay. And the next person is Amanda. Amanda, unmute and go ahead, you have two minutes.
Hello. I'm inviting everyone on this call to join in a 50 states discussion of what it means to be a de jour form of government rather than a de facto form of government. The conversation will take place starting August 30th. You can find more information at the website dejureforsure.com, which is spelled D-E-J-U-R-E four, the number four, S-U-R-E dot com. And there is some material on the site now, but the discussion will take place starting August 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment portion of this meeting. I want to thank all of the applicants for going through this process. It was a lengthy question and answer process, and I appreciate hearing from all of you. Colleagues, I hope you don't mind if I just frame this conversation by stating that I think we're at a turning point in the city that I feel is precarious as it comes to economic development. The recovery that we are experiencing from the economic impact of COVID-19 are going to require an all-hands-on-deck situation from council, from our, and from planning commission. And I think we're going to need a very concerted group of folks who are grounded in not only experience, but collegiality, along with that expertise. I really appreciated what I heard from the applicants tonight, include, in, in terms of that proven community participation. And at the same time, I'm, I'm hoping that we can, you know, appoint people who have the appropriate expertise as well. So, I want to turn it over to my colleagues to give light to what they're thinking, and if they'll give me room to, at the end of our discussion, I do have a motion in mind. So, if you could hold your motion for me, I would appreciate it, but I'd like to hear from you first. So, Member Donahue, can we hear your thoughts, please?
Uh, to someone else first.
All right, Member Medina.
Uh, this evening, I'm going to take a departure from my normal comments on this. I think we've got four qualified applicants. On paper, everyone's got great qualifications, some more years' experience than others. I think the role of planning commission, I've heard a lot about it this evening, has a lot to do with judgment. By putting someone on the planning commission, we're expecting them to execute certain things on path of the city in such a way that it's not going to incur liability for the city. And I'm going to go ahead and address Dr. Sway directly. You've casually run around accusations of corruption at me. You've repeatedly demonstrated that you don't understand the Brown Act and repeatedly accuse me of ethical violations. If you do that to a developer as a planning commissioner, you can get us sued. It would be irresponsible of me to appoint someone to the planning commission, but I feel like has a very high likelihood of incurring culpability for the city in a legal fashion. SB 35 requires us to approve projects based on objective standards, not based on what our vision of the world should be. And it is incumbent on a public servant to separate your ego and what you want in the world from how your job and your role needs to fulfill the letter of the law. Local and state regulations are extremely important here, and understanding what they are and what the limitations are is a key component of this rule. So that said, I think there is an amazing place in the world for people who have these strong, bold visions. I think they push us to think bigger and better things, but I do not think that place is planning commission. I think it would be irresponsible for me to consider them for that role.
Thanks, Member Medina. Member Donahue?
Uh, I think that we do have four qualified people, and I think that Eugene Sway really has the ability to get a commission composed of many different people to consider things that maybe were not considered to begin with. And it could bring a kind of true innovation to our city. And I think also he is capable of not causing lawsuits, but of attracting more developers, not less, to our city. So I, I think he is somebody I'd want to support. Tito Young has done great service for the city, and I'd like to see him continue to be on the planning commission.
Member Medina, if you wanted to respond?
I just want to clarify, Member Donahue, do you think I'm corrupt or racist?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay, so then you have fundamentally come to different conclusions than your pick for planning commissioner. That concerns me.
Sort of nervous to go. So, we're all friends, and we have passion, and that's okay. And I think it's also important to lift up voices like Member Medina's in a moment like this, because it is not acceptable, and I appreciate you saying that, Member Donahue, it is not acceptable for a member of this council to be unfairly attacked, harassed, and slandered by people in the public who then come and ask for us to vote for them on completely baseless things, which unfortunately, Mr. Sway has done with her, is what I understand. So, you know, and, and Member Donahue, you have to remember, we were the recipients of an email from him in which he said that the other members of our council didn't put as much thought or time into sustainability and environmental issues as you and I, which, again, is not a very good sign for somebody seeking planning commission appointment who's essentially negating the voices of the two women on the council. So, I am empathetic to Member Medina's concerns about him being appropriate for that reason. And I would actually, I have, I got two comments now. I had one. My one comment was going to be, I want to vouch for Jack Gisone. I want to start on the thing I wanted to say, which is, I have known Jack Gisone for, I think, six years now, maybe seven years, 2014 or 15. And Jack is an extremely humble servant, and actually, I'll use him as an example for my second comment. He- He is somebody who, you know, as a representative from Park, I'm recused from all Sherwin-Williams items, I'm on Park. And Jack is thoughtful, he is inquisitive, he shows up, he does the work. He makes sure that when there are issues brought to us by the city or the developer, that those are circulated among us. He drafts letters on our behalf that he asks for feedback on. He shows up and represents us. And he's volunteered his time on the park committee. And he gave concise, clear, and I think really informed answers this evening to the questions that were presented. And so I just want to, I want to say I have one person who I'm very interested in is serving on a planning commission tonight, and that is Jack Guzoni, because he, to me, embodies the totality of the things that we want from, that the questions are designed to find people like Jack. That's essentially what I believe. So I just want to put out there that I will support a motion that includes him this evening. My second comment goes to this little discussion about the things other candidates have done. And there's, it's really hard to argue when Mr. Sway shares all of the things he's done in his life professionally, that he is an accomplished person. I do not argue at all that he is an educated person, he is an educating person, that he is a creative person, and he is an innovative person. But that isn't actually enough. Former council member Nora Davis, I'm going to share something that I don't generally share with the public. She and I maintained a friendship after she left office, and she and I would meet two to four times a year up until about eight months before she passed away in 2020. And we used that time to talk about a number of things. She gave me advice on several things, and I saw her advice on several things. And I want to share something that she said to me in the very first meeting I had after that election in 2016 that has actually been the most critical piece of advice I've utilized from her in the last five years. She said, John, there are three things that are more important to do as a council member than anything else. She's like, number one, you need to hire and retain a city manager who works for you, who supports the staff, who continues the staff of the council agenda, defends the council agenda, and is responsive to the needs of the council. She said, as soon as you have someone who doesn't do those things, she's like, get rid of them. She's like, find a person who will work for you, support your agenda, implement it, and help make the staff successful. And we have that. She said, number two, she said, you need to do everything you can to serve on the budget committee, because in her opinion, the budget was the single most important thing that the city did, and it was critical for somebody to have a continuity in serving on the budget committee, because she said the council really needs to follow the budget in order to shepherd all the things the city does. And so I saw in 2016, I got elected to be on the budget committee, and I've been the chair for five years, and she is absolutely right. I have learned so much more about the city from that service. But the third thing she said was that the single most important appointment you'll ever make as a planning commissioner, and she said, and it's really important that you pick people who have done and demonstrated that they have spent the time learning about the city, being involved. She said, don't be afraid to recruit people who you think are good, who don't think of themselves as leaders, but have shown that they are willing to learn. And that's why Jack Guzoni is that person for me. He's been on the park committee, he talked about learning about the community, residents and neighbors. She said, but you need to pick people who have really good judgment. You don't have to always agree with them, but they have to have good judgment, because the decisions they make leave a lasting, long-term impact on the city. And Councilmember Davis was exactly right about those things. And I do have concerns, Member Donahue, about the judgment of a applicant who has accused councilmembers of being racist, who has written openly that they were corrupt in some way. I don't know the full context of what he accused Councilmember Medina about. But I do think it is really important that we pick people who have good judgment. And I met with Mr. Sway after the last round of planning commission appointments, and I suggested to him the path, the same path Nora Davis suggested to me when I lost the city council race in 2014. She said, apply to be on the housing committee so I can support you in something I know you're good at, and we can see how good you really are, and everyone can see it. And I followed that advice. I recommended the housing committee or the commission on aging to Mr. Sway. And he took that, he took that information, and it became part of a open letter to people about how we were trying to guide him to something else, when really, the entire purpose for me meeting with him was to be helpful to him so that he could be successful. So I have to question his judgment a little bit, and I want to be able to support people who have his skill set, but I also think it's important that we pick people who have good judgment, because that's the advice I've received from somebody who did this for a long time that's not been proven wrong so far.
Thank you, Member Bowder. I'll conclude with my comments, and I will state for the record that Member Medina is neither racist nor corrupt. And I take personal offense to someone stating that I don't think enough about sustainability. As the chair of East Bay Community Energy, an agency that is budgeted to spend $500 million on largely renewable energy investments for Alameda County and the City of Tracy in the next year. So I'm personally offended by that statement. Thank you, colleagues, for allowing me to make a motion. And I make this motion in deference to everything that was said tonight, and also with a great deal of respect to Commissioner Yang, who I appreciate serving on previously our housing committee and on our planning commission. But as I stated at the top of this discussion, I think we are in a precarious place where our city needs to be very mindful about our development as we go forward, especially as we are, we are not out of our economic recovery insofar as, you know, as where the city needs to be. And I think we need to proceed with caution. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Al Graham and Jack Guzoni as our next planning commissioners and move that resolution. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second, and I'd just like to note that I don't typically personally comment on applicants in such a fashion. I just felt almost an explanation was due at this point. It's truly not about me, it's truly about whether or not someone's going to be a good public servant in this capacity.
We appreciate that comment. Any more discussions, colleagues, before we move to a vote? Okay, I will ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
No.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And with that, Sherry, I apologize, I don't have that window open. Is there anything else on this agenda before I close this meeting?
There is none.
Okay, very good. This meeting is adjourned at 7:49 PM, and just let me know when you're ready for me to open the Mesa meeting.
Okay, all set for that.
All right, the time is 7:49 PM. Good evening, everyone. Today is still Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. This is a management of Emeryville Services Authority meeting. And please bear with me while I read some introductory remarks. I'd like to state to the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. And as I've been stating, these waivers will expire on September 21st. So we expect our first in-person meeting to occur on October 5th, but we'll be sure to keep our website updated, so you can check back with us on that. City Hall is now reopened to the public, and you can check on emeryville.org to see our media revised schedule. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and to write comments by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, and they provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as e-notification and on social media. Is our whole still stand here, or shall we?
We'll do a quick roll call since it's been a little while. Councilmember Bowders?
Very good.
Still here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
And I am here. Do we have a motion on approval of the final agenda?
I'm moved.
I second.
I have a motion for Member Medina, a second by Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Are there any ex parte communications on this, on this agenda? Seeing none, now is the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. And as I stated for the previous meeting, we are running behind, so two minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, please press star nine. At this time, I will ask the clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
There are no comment cards for this meeting. I see that Fran Quetel has raised her hand. You may wish to clarify with her that this is the Mesa meeting and not the regular meeting, but I'll let you handle that.
So I'll just make that general statement for any public speakers, that this is the Mesa meeting and not the regular city council meeting. And with that, I will turn it back over to the clerk to unmute folks and set the timer for two minutes per speaker.
Okay, next is Brian Donahue?
Or Fran?
Yes.
I think, pardon me. I think I'm better off speaking at the regular city council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Fran.
Yes, that's good. Thank you.
Speaker Donahue, you have two minutes.
Yeah, I just would like to say, you know, I listened to what happened, you know, for the meeting just happened about selection of the planning commissioner. I heard Councilmember Medina, you know, sort of attacking one of the applicants. I don't think it's your job, the four of you's job, to be attacking citizens that come to their government. The last meeting I went to, I pointed out how the city should follow its own regulations with regard to doling out blue zone, blue curb parking spots. I said that, you know, the city should follow its own regulations, written down in black and white, encoded at City Hall, and that's what you guys should, you should do that, follow that. And because of personalities involved, Councilmember Medina attacked me. Said that it was deeply offensive that I had suggested that this blue curb not be permitted, because the regulations, if you read the regulations, it says that the blue curb should not have been permitted. So I'm here defending the city's own regulations, and I was attacked by Councilmember Medina. So I don't, I think it's untorrid. I think that you should let people come and make comments, and if you don't agree with them, you're in the position of power. You don't punch down. I mean, we are supposed to punch up, you're supposed to sit there and listen and take the criticism, and just take it. You're paid to take the criticism. You don't have to lash out in a dick-assist manner. You know, we're finished with dick-assists. Those are the bad old days. I don't think you should be attacking public citizens, peep speakers that speak out about their government. I think you should listen, and if you don't appreciate it, don't attack. Don't punch down. It's really, like I said, it's untorrid and it's unbecoming. Thank you very much.
Clerk, are there any other public speakers?
Not at this time.
Very good. So I will conclude public comment at this time. That brings us to the consent calendar. Colleagues, this would be your chance to ask any questions or pull any items. Otherwise, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
City Manager?
Oh, yes.
City Manager, I'd like to speak to the item on the consent calendar with regard to the calendaring of the new regular meeting in September. I want to call you to the resolution that's attached to that item. In that resolution, it establishes the time of commencement of that meeting at 7:14 PM. And on the other three items in the subsequent meetings, the resolutions are silent as to the time of commencement of the meeting. Consistent with your council rules, those meetings would commence at 7:14, 7:15, 7:16. We just wanted to bring that to your attention to clarify if you would like a different start time for the September 13th meetings. Those need to be stated in those resolutions, otherwise the regular rules of the city council apply. So I just, I wanted to bring that to your attention before you adopt the consent calendar, unless, if you'd like to modify that as part of this action.
Colleagues, I think, excuse me, sorry, I muted the wrong button. I believe the city manager brought this up because we also have a sustainability meeting on that day, so if folks have a different mind as to how you order the meetings, speak now if you have ideas on how you'd like to handle that. Member Medina, I think you're muted.
Yeah, since we do sustainability, and if we need to do a closed session prior to the meeting, that could become a conflict. I also think we talked about starting it at 5:30 last time. I believe was our general consensus, like the regular meeting. Perhaps we can reschedule sustainability so as to avoid any conflict on that day. If Councilmember Donahue would submit up to that.
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. So with that understood, do we have a motion on the consent calendar as it is? Now, City Manager, if you have a comment. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, assuming I had my misunderstanding what we just agreed to.
But that would do 7:30. We want it at 5:30?
No, if you want the regular meeting to start any earlier, you need to modify the resolution that's attached to your packet. The resolution starts your Mesa meeting at 7:14 PM.
I understand. I'll make a motion to start the, and we set the meeting for 5:00 or 5:30?
5:30, I think, was our consensus.
5:30.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the resolution for the Mesa meeting at 5:29. Does that sound like I'm doing the right thing here?
Yeah.
That's the city manager's thumbs up? Yes, okay, I will second your, I'll second your motion. So we have a motion by Member Bowders and a second by myself. I'll, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously, and at 7:59, it's adjourned as this meeting. And then next up, folks, is the successor agency meeting, and then we get to the regular meeting. So this is another one that should just take a moment, and I await the city clerk's cue that we are ready to begin this one.
We're ready.
All right, the time I have is 7:59 PM, and I am convening the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville redevelopment agency meeting. Today is still Tuesday, July 20th, 21. And I've already read my introductory remarks just a moment ago. So do we need to call the roll again, Sherry? Are we?
No, we're good, we're good on that.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Second.
Okay. Motion from Member Bowders, a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Colleagues, are there any ex parte communications? Seeing none, that moves us to public comment. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Two minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. Now I'll turn to the clerk to see whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments. And I'll just remind folks that this is the successor agency meeting.
There are no online comment cards and the hand. There are no online comment cards, and the hand that was raised is now unraised.
Thank, thank you, Fran. We'll get to the regular meeting in just a moment. Um, but now, um, I will conclude public comments, and, um, I'll just check in with staff because we are looking at the calendar again of this meeting. Do we need to make the same adjustment? And for what specific time should we do that in the resolution?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe this would, you would add the language commencing at 5:30 PM for the successor agency?
5:30 PM. So I will go ahead and make that motion, amending the draft resolution to commence the meeting at 5:30 PM on September 13th. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
So this is a motion by myself, a second by Member Bowers. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. There are no action items, so that adjourns this meeting at 8:02 PM. And now we are moving on to the main event. And I'll await the clerk's office to let me know when we are ready to go.
Mayor, could we do a two-minute break?
Of course. Um, let's go ahead and, um.
How about three minutes?
Take a recess? Sure. Let's, let's make it an even three, and, um, we'll convene the next meeting as soon as everyone's back. Take your time, three minutes.
I can hear a weird whispering sound from you, Diane. And I think, judging by John's face, he heard. Not me.
Okay.
Diane, it sounds like you're haunting us.
You're on mute, Diane. Can't hear you.
Oh, she got the wrong mute on.
No, can't hear anything.
That's why we took a three-minute break.
I think we were getting exaggerated hand gestures from her, though.
I think she probably had earbuds that burned out or something. Yeah, I think they're dead.
Or steal your husband's.
My back is killing me in this chair. I need a new chair.
I'm standing, dude, do some of this.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm sorry to do that to people in the public, but I'm gonna stand. City for a long time, it's not great.
No, we can't hear you. We're down our third headset.
All right, how about now?
Yes!
Okay, all right, that's why I travel with so much technology. Okay, is everyone here? Yes, um, Sherri, are we ready to go?
We are ready to go.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. It is 8:08 PM. Today is Tuesday, July 20th. And, and, um, this is the regular city council, uh, meeting of the City of Emeryville. Sherri, should I read the introductory remarks again and take the roll again as we've taken a break?
Sure, yes, please.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. And just for people's information at home, those waivers do expire on September 31st, uh, 2021. So the first meeting that we expect to have in person will happen on October 5th, but stay tuned for more details on that. City Hall was closed during the public health emergency, but it is now reopened with revised hours, which you can find on our website at emeryville.org. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hand. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. Now I will turn it over to the clerk to please call the roll for this meeting.
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. And then, um, for approval of the final agenda, I'd like to make the suggestion that we hear, um, item 14, future agenda items requested from council members between items 12.2 and 12.3, so that, uh, Member Bowers may be included in that discussion and before he is recused, um, from 12.3. So I will make a motion to that effect. Do I have a second?
I second your motion.
You have a motion by myself, a second by Member Bowers?
I'll second.
Okay. We got it, Scott. So, uh, please call the roll, um, on the revised final agenda.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that is approved. We have no special orders of the day. I'll turn it over to the clerk for any announcements of commission and committee vacancies.
Um, just to say that we currently have a recruitment that's open to pick up some of the remaining vacancies that we have. I don't have the list in front of me, unfortunately, I apologize. But, um, that is an ongoing recruitment, and people can always check out the detailed list of vacancies on our website.
Very good, thank you. That brings us to item six, council member special announcements or reports on meeting attendance. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report on? Member Medina?
Uh, I attended, as I do, our Gilman Fields JPA meeting, which, uh, Councilmember Martinez also, or Mayor Martinez also apparently gets the agendas for. And, uh, per usual, we discussed at-length park usage rates and potential financial woes. And, uh, they said that they might be coming back with an ask for more money, and I said absolutely nothing. Just staring.
Thank you, Member Medina, for representing our wishes on that JPA. Member Bowers?
Thank you. Just to give an update from the Alameda County Transportation Commission that, uh, the, um, Projects Plan and Planning Committee, I had to think about what PPC stood for. Um, the Projects and Planning Committee this last week, um, the committee unanimously recommended the, um, the CIP approval for investment of $25 million in discretionary funds to cities for projects. And, uh, that will be voted on Thursday of this week for approval. And in it, it contains two of the three projects that Emeryville submitted, which includes $2 million for the general benefit for the Emery ground, which the city is obligated to, and we are currently funded through this year. So it'll be four years of $500,000 after that. So in other words, um, there are five years of fiscal funding for the city on that. And the second was $2 million for the 40th Street design to complete the funding for the design phase of that project, which is great because it'll move us closer to being able to solicit capital to build the project. So I just wanted to let folks know that is anticipated to be approved on Thursday.
Thank you, Member Bowers. Any other report? Okay, seeing none.
We're hearing two of you.
I am trying to figure that out, too. Oh, I, okay. Got it, hold on. How's that?
Better, thank you.
That was my backup phone, I, which I finally got connected again. I apologize. Okay, I was hearing two of me, too. It was very confusing. You only need one of me. Um, Madam City Manager, is there a, a report from your department tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a brief report. Um, we are pleased to announce that our first scooter permit was issued. Um, thank you Nancy Henry for working so diligently on that. Uh, Spin was the first recipient of our scooter permit, and we have two other applicants pending who are close. So we're happy to finally be able to announce that to you.
Great news. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, colleagues, are there any ex parte communications to report for this evening? I'll start with Member Bowers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On item 12.3, I need to be recused this evening. It relates to the Lennar, I don't have the title in front of me, it's the Lennar proposal for, um, street calming. I live within 500 feet of the project at 4260 Hallock Street in Emeryville, and I own that property. And so I will be leaving the meeting, and I have not participated, nor will I participate in those discussions.
Very good, thank you. Member Medina, is your hand raised?
Yes, regarding item 12.3, I've spoken with both Representatives of Lennar and Bike East Bay.
Very good, thank you. Um, now is the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Two minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
Uh, there is an online comment card from Ms. Cottell, but she's also present to speak in person. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Um, I'm Fran Cottell. I live on the west side of, uh, Emeryville at Watergate, and I am the vice chair of the Budget Advisory Committee. Today, I want to put older building accountability on the radar screen of our city council. In 2018, SB 721 was California's response to the 2015 Berkeley balcony class. It added additional six-year inspections and safety requirements for multifamily residential units. These initial inspections have a long off due date, January 1st, 2025. But now, as we look at recent events across the country, older building accountability, which is a large part of our housing stock, is clearly on our radar screen. And I would like our city council to think about additional layers of protection concerning older buildings, waterproofing, balcony inspection, and soil analysis, particularly when these may have been scheduled but then are deliberately postponed or delayed, sometimes by years. These are not elements we can ignore. If someone has an uncorrected balcony issue, is there a city point person? If waterproofing, which proved critical in Florida, is not done as reserves require, should our city be made aware and given an explanation and a new due date? For landfill construction, can a regular detailed soil analysis be required every 10 or 15 years? And for new buildings, should a tall building be proposed only after first analyzing its escapability and its potential effect on the stability of contiguous buildings? And communicating these to city-state neighboring structures even before the project is considered? Right now, if the city annually, annually asked citizens, when is the waterproofing or balcony inspection plan of your complex built 30 or 40 or 50 years ago supposed to happen? Has it happened? And if not, why not? And when will it occur? I'll bet that many, myself included, can't give a simple answer. Therefore, my request is that the city establish an older building accountability program, annual commu-, an annual communications requirement, and point persons for inspections, certifications, repairs, postponements, and delays. I'm certainly willing to volunteer myself. Thank you very much for listening. I really appreciate it, and I can, I can see that you appreciate hearing what I've said, and I'm, I'm glad I brought it to your attention. I thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Speaker. Um, Sherri, feel free to unmute the next speaker. You will have two minutes.
Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like everyone to, uh, understand that the, the City of Emeryville officially determined that the Sherwin-Williams trees that were voted to be cut down recently, street trees, one of the reasons why they were, uh, were, were to be cut down or should be cut down was because that they had grown so large that they are overarching the street. And this comment was brought to us by the head of the Public Works Department, the former, I understand, the former head. So that is officially from the City of Emeryville a reason why the trees had to be cut down, because they had grown so large. So with that in mind, we need to start cutting trees down just pell-mell all over the city. For instance, Park Avenue, those trees, I don't know if you've noticed, but they've gotten so large that some of them are arching over the street. And so since the city has recognized that these are nuisance trees, when they are growing over the street, uh, we just have to start either trimming them or just, you know, cutting them down, like you did on, uh, with the Sherwin-Williams, uh, trees. So, uh, either that or clarify. Or maybe you may, you might want to, uh, take back what the, the head of the planning, I'm sorry, the head of the Public Works Department said. But as it goes, as of right now, that is the truth from the City of Emeryville. The trees that are, that look so large that they overarch the street are nuisances that need to be, uh, either cut down or maybe trimmed back. That wasn't elucidated, but cutting down was certainly the, the solution, the best solution at hand. at hand, as was reported officially by the City of Emeryville. So could you please address that issue? Thank you.
Thank you, speakers. That brings us to our consent calendar. And colleagues, if you have anything to pull, or if you have any questions, Member Bowers?
Just keeping in line with the prior discussions we had at the last two meetings, Madam Mayor, item 10.5 is our calendar item. And so if it would please the council, I'll make a motion to approve the consent and calendar, but I will amend the resolution in item 10.5 to change the start time to 5:31 PM on September 13th. That, unless there's other questions, that would be my motion.
Very good, thank you for making that motion, and I will second it. We have a motion by Member Bowers, and a second by myself. Is there any further questions or discussion, colleagues? Seeing none, I will turn to the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that passes unanimously, so we will, we will move on to our public hearing. And this is on our residential energy reach codes. And I will turn it over to staff to go ahead and do a report on this item.
Madam Mayor, I have a presentation tonight, reminding you of your previous action and policy basis, and that will be presented by Nancy Humphrey, supported by Farhad, our consultant, who's affiliated with EBCE. So Nancy, are you ready to roll?
Yes, I am.
Sherry, if you could pull up the presentation?
Will do that. Do people see that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, thank you very much, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am here, back with this item. As you may remember, several months ago, we talked about reach codes, and council directed that we, we come back with a residential reach code for all-electric new residential construction. And that's what we're here with tonight, for your consideration. Next slide. What is being proposed in this, in this proposed ordinance is, one, that all-new residential construction must be all-electric, no natural gas, no plumbed natural gas. And that includes the residential occupancies in a mixed-use building. And we are also proposing that all-new 100% residential construction, up to 10 stories in height, must install solar panels on the building's solar zone. And just quickly, the state code requires that up to 10 stories residential construction identify areas on, on the roof or on the property that are suitable for solar panels and that are not used for anything else. The state code further requires that residential construction up to three stories install solar on the solar zone. And this proposal would increase the requirement to install the solar to, all the way up to the 10 stories for residential. Next slide, please. And I don't, I don't plan to go into any depth on any of these reasons on why, although I am prepared to, to give information or answer questions on any of these. But just to, to run over it quickly, natural gas in home appliances is, is destructive to indoor air quality, to outdoor air quality. Gas infrastructure is a concern for community safety. Natural gas is methane, which is a very potent greenhouse gas. And some of these concerns, including the, the air quality concerns and the economic concerns, are equity concerns, because it is cheaper to build all-electric, so perhaps more affordable housing can be built. And also, residents in smaller residences and in denser communities are more impacted by the air quality issues that gas appliances bring. So next. Also, as you can see from a greenhouse gas perspective, natural gas, in building-related greenhouse gas emissions within Emeryville, natural gas accounts for three-quarters of those emissions. And cannot be, cannot be cleaned, they, they, they're inherent, the greenhouse gases, it is a greenhouse gas, while electricity can be and is being made cleaner and cleaner year over year. Next, please. So just some, some housekeeping on this. In order to, to make a reach code, you've got to, you've got to give findings on climatic, geologic, and topological reasons why in your area, those reach codes are appropriate. And we've done so, I'll go into it a little bit on the next slide. Cost-effectiveness studies must be done and be acceptable to the California Energy Commission. And the reach codes must not use more energy than the state code, the basic state code as it stands. So next slide, please. All of our, so these are the required findings, as we have them in, as we will present them to the California Energy Commission if this is approved. They are mostly related to climate change, sea level rise, drought, flooding, fire, plus an earthquake, the fact that we're in an earthquake zone. Seismic activity is another reason why. We have findings that show that reach codes would be beneficial in this area. Okay, next, please. Okay, before, before we get into this, the cost-effectiveness question, I'm going to ask Farhad Farmand, who is with TRC, and who is under contract to East Bay Community Energy to help jurisdictions research and possibly pass reach codes. Farhad did the, some of the studies on cost-effectiveness, and is an expert on it. So I'll pass it off to Farhad for the next two slides.
Very much, Nancy. Good evening, Honorable. So yes, I have a couple of slides that are information-thence, but I appreciate your consideration and patience as I attempt to walk through them. The question is, is it cost-effective to build all-electric residential buildings and dwelling units? Several studies have shown that yes, this is possible to build all-electric cost-effectively, not just in California, but across the nation. This particular study on this slide is from a consultancy called E3, that shows $191 per year in savings on a net lifecycle basis. I provided the results in this fashion because they provide disaggregated construction costs and ongoing bill costs on a per-appliance basis. So we can come back to this if there are concerns over particular appliances. However, there are some, some nuances that I also want to share, you know, a little bit later. I think I want to draw your attention to the blue box at the top right of the graphic. All-electric construction is about $10,000 less expensive than in a mixed-fuel building. It does have about $7 to $10 per month more in bill impacts, depending on if you're on an EBCE rate versus a PG&E rate. However, if you were to use your construction cost savings of $10,000 into more solar panels, you would be immediately cost-effective, because you would have a neutral construction cost and monthly bill savings of about $5 per month, in addition to having a zero-net energy home. Now, this is for a 2,400-square-foot home, which I understand is larger than what is commonly constructed in Emeryville. On our next slide, when we get there, I'll, I'll show some other cost-effectiveness analyses on smaller dwelling units. This analysis also assumes air conditioning is going to be installed in the baseline situation, which is not required by the energy code, but is becoming more important as we have more and more heat waves. Lastly, the study assumes energy-star rated appliances of the space heater and the water heater. So these are, again, above-code efficiencies that a city cannot require to be installed, but is likely to be the most common way that a developer or builder would construct an all-electric building. Next slide, please. So this chart is a bar chart that, again, shows the net lifecycle, the net present value of lifecycle costs and savings associated with construction and on-bill impacts. The bar on the far left, as well as the table column on the far left, depict the study I showed on the previous slide, the E3 study. The remaining bars on, to the right, are studies done by the investor-owned utilities, so some PG&E, so Calidus, and sending of gas and electric, as well, and some others, that look at a range of dwelling unit, residential dwelling unit sizes. So the key takeaway here is that it is possible to build all-electric cost-effectively for a whole bunch of types of dwelling unit sizes, but there are some packaging strategies that need to be considered in doing so. The E3 study looked at high-efficiency appliances. Another packaging strategy is above-code solar PV. And then the last packaging approach is the building efficiency measures. This is envelope upgrades, hot water upgrades, more efficient fans in your building. The proposal tonight only includes above-code solar PV, as Nancy mentioned, for high-rise residential buildings between four and 10 stories. However, the, the findings are there, that a developer can build cost-effectively if they would like to. And the proposal is trying to balance flexibility, flexible approaches for the builder, for the developer, versus the imperative of having to build all-electric. I hope that tonight, I hope that this provides some more further information on the cost-effectiveness findings. And please, as the council, I'm available for questions at the end of the hour. Thank you. Back to you, Nancy.
Thank you, Farhad. So, and Farhad will stay for questions at the end of the presentation as well. Sherry, next slide, please. All right, so in, in considering this, we would be joining a movement that is being undertaken regionally, really, our neighboring jurisdictions have passed energy reach codes, including, you know, all of these listed here. And each one is a little different, but most of these on this list have an all-electric residential requirement, and several of them, including neighboring ones, neighboring cities have additional solar requirements. So this would be, this would have the benefit of making things more streamlined for builders and developers, because the, our requirements would be similar to those in our neighboring jurisdictions. And we, we'd all jointly be moving the market in a way that is meaningful. Next, please. So the proposed exemptions, so in the beginning, when this, when this takes effect, if it does take effect, projects that are already in the pipeline in specific ways would be exempted. If a project has a planning permit approved prior to the effective date, or a zoning compliance review approved prior to the effective date, they would be exempt from these requirements. Projects not requiring planning approval, but that had already submitted the building permit application, would be exempt as well. And accessory dwelling units under 400 square feet would be exempt. That's the only one that would stay in place. The other three would, would time out over time. Next, please. So if this ordinance passes two readings, we'll take two, two paths to get it implemented. On the one hand, we will make a submittal to the California Energy Commission with the required findings, the studies, which are Exhibits B and C in your packet, that are the cost-effectiveness studies. And if the CEC approves it, which is expected, since they have approved these other very similar ones in the region, then we file with the California Building Standards Commission. They don't have a decision-making role, we just file with them. Meantime, in-house, we'll be developing our internal procedures to make sure we, we have the plan review and, and other procedures in place to, to enforce this, and we do outreach and education with the stakeholders. And then when all of that's done, we would be able to implement. All right, next, please. So the recommendation is, formally speaking, to adopt the first reading of an ordinance to, first, amend Chapter 10 of Title 8 of the Emeryville Municipal Code, the energy code. Two, to approve the cost-effectiveness studies that are attached as Exhibits B and C, as required by the California Energy Commission. And three, to make the required climatic, geological, and topological findings, which were in this presentation, and are also in the staff report. So next, please. And just as a reminder, these are the, these are the amendments proposed, that all-new residential construction must be all-electric, no natural gas, no plumbed natural gas, and that all-new 100% residential construction from four to 10 stories in height must install solar panels on the building's solar zone. So that's what I've got.
Thank you, Nancy, for that presentation. I'll bring it back to my colleagues. Are there any clarifying questions? I realize two of you are on the Sustainability Committee, so you probably got all your questions answered, but Member Medina?
Not for myself, but for the council's benefit, because I remember this was the question they had last time that we did get answered in sustainability. Can you pop up, sorry for my child, what is the definition of the solar zone in Emeryville?
Yes, can I pop it up? I can read it to you.
Read it would be great.
Harlan wants to read it to us.
Yeah. Can the cat read it? Finding it.
I encourage him.
It is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding it, but...
Well, Nancy's looking for that. The solar zone currently is required, solar PV is required for installation on new residential construction from one to three stories. And from four to 10 stories, the new residential construction, the new construction is required to identify what's called the solar zone on the roof. So it's, it's an area that is required under the building code to be, to be identified, that it can support solar PV. What this ordinance would do is then require the installation of a PV in that area. So it's, it's actually a term, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me either, it's a term that is defined in existing code right now.
I'm a bit concerned that, I just wanted to clarify that. Yeah.
Yeah, so...
That works for us, the council, that works for me. I just want to circle back, because that was the consensus concern and why we brought solar zone back to sustainability.
Yeah, the bottom line is, if you're using that area for anything else, you don't need to count it, anything else that qualifies, you don't need to count it as part of your solar zone.
Okay, and then I have a couple of questions, if folks don't have any. I'm just curious why we are omitting the requirement for ADUs under 400 square feet?
Farhad, can you speak to that?
Yes, so Councilmember Mayor Martinez, you may have noticed that cost-effectiveness gets a little bit harder at very, very small buildings. So that's one consideration. The other consideration is that heat pump water heaters are most efficient when they're installed inside the building footprint. And given that there's very little building footprint to give away in those smaller buildings, that's another approach to not deter the construction.
Okay. And then another question that maybe Farhad, Farhad might be able to answer, is so for ADUs that are 750 square feet and over, we are requiring the photovoltaic, above-code solar photovoltaic?
That's actually, it's only for multifamily buildings that would be between four and 10 stories. A new construction detached ADU would already be required to have a solar array. And at the builder's discretion, they may install a few other panels in order to make it cost, you know, offset the entirety of the electricity, make it much more cost-effective. So it's not the current proposal.
So, so it is, it is in the ordinance... So, it is, it is in the ordinance that ADUs of 750 and above would have to include the solar photovoltaic array?
It is in the base energy code, they already do have to...
Oh, that's in the base energy code, okay, good to know. Thank you. And then, I had a question for Nancy about the CEC approval process. How does that, in terms of, like, how quickly do they turn that around? Is that, like, we get it to them and they approve it, or do they take some time with that?
They do take some time, they gotta get it on their board calendar and then address it that way. So, it's been taking, Farhad, if you know better, I would say three months is a typical turnaround that I'm hearing.
They're getting a little faster nowadays, it's about 30 to 60 days.
Does it change our effective date? So, we do the first reading, and then we do the second reading, and then we have our effective date. If they're behind us, do we have to change our effective date?
Farhad?
Legally, you would need to have an effective date after California Energy Commission approval.
Right, Mayor, it doesn't become effective until they've approved it and we filed it with the California Building Standards Commission.
Okay, understood. All right, so, those are all my questions. Colleagues, did you have any other questions for Nancy or Farhad? Okay, well, as this is a public hearing, I would like to go ahead and open the public hearing at 8:42 PM. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. I will allow three minutes for this item as it's public hearing. The city clerk can read your comments into the record, or if you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. And at this time, I will check in with our city clerk to see whether any comments have been submitted, or whether any hands are raised to make comment.
I have no comment cards, and I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, just giving you the second. And seeing no hands raised and no public comment, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of this meeting at 8:42 PM, and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion. Colleagues, do you have any issues with the proposed ordinance? I know that it's been reviewed in depth by the Sustainability Committee, and this is part of Energy Code. Not if everyone has all of their questions and concerns answered. And if folks, I'm getting a notice that my connection is unstable, so please let me know that if you're unable to hear through me or unable to see me, but if folks are...
A little bit, but I was gonna, I raised my hand. You want someone to go first? Great.
Oh, go ahead, Member Medina.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that Councilmember Donahue and I recommended that these come back because they were fairly straightforward, the least controversial items of our Reach Code session. We believe this represents the council direction, and these are, well, they have the cost-benefit analysis and all the findings required, and fit well within our city's sustainability goals. So, happy to entertain further discussion, but I'm happy to make a motion to read by title only.
Member Donahue?
I'm happy to read by title only. They, a lot of the public gets sometimes upset about all-electric because they just have never experienced induction cooking. And our city has, through our local energy supplier, loaned us some cooktops, and Councilmember Medina and I are gonna have a cook-off competition using these induction cookers, and I think we should figure out a time for that in the future, and people can see how fast and marvelous they are. So, I just want to say that to the listening public, that all-electric doesn't mean a loss in cooking, from my previous experience, which is not that much, but it's, it appears to be not a problem, maybe even a major benefit for some people's cooking.
I would posit, I would be in support of our videographer, Dave, getting you and Ally in a cook-off competition, because I think the public would very much want to see what was happening. And Scott, I know that you're, you're well-versed in electric cooking from where you live. And here, on vacation here in Hawaii, the house I'm staying in is all-electric, and this is the safest place for my 10-year-old to learn how to cook, and guess who's been making us omelets every single morning, sometimes waking us up at five with a plate of already cooked food. But that's fine, because I feel much safer with him doing that on an electric cooktop than I would on a gas range with fire involved. So, it, it has been a delight to see that happen. Member Bouders?
I'm gonna need you to have a word with my nieces who wake me up by jumping out of my bed in the morning. I just want to thank the staff and the Sustainability Committee for this important issue. There's, the Air District is looking regionally at ways to reduce NOx emissions, and there's some preemption rules from federal law and state building code authority that limit that, so I'm just taking, I'm hoping that we've all taken those things into account, and this is within the scope of what we're authorized to do, but I will be supporting it.
Very good. So, I heard a motion from Member Medina, and Vice Mayor Donahue, was that a second with your support?
That's a second.
That was a second from Member Donahue. Can we please call the roll on the read-by-title-only?
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye, and I'll turn it over to the city attorney to please read by title.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending Chapter 10 of Title VIII of the Emeryville Municipal Code to amend the 2019 California Energy Code of the 2019 edition of the California Building Standards Code, California Code of Regulations, Title 24, Part 6, Equit determination exempt pursuant sequel guideline 15061V3.
Okay, thank you. And as this was a public hearing, we have already provided the time for public comment, so at this time, I will accept a motion on the ordinance.
They're moved.
Second.
A motion by Member Medina, a second by Vice Mayor Donahue, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you again to Sustainability Committee and to staff for their hard work on this, and my thanks to Farhad as well, because I know you're working with all of the cities in our territory to further these Reach Code goals. So, that'll bring us to Item 12.1. This is consideration of dissolving current roster, the current roster of City Council ad hoc committees. And, Member Bouders, you have a hand raised?
Make a motion to abolish all the ad hoc committees.
A second.
We have a motion by Member Bouders and a second by Member Medina.
Wait, do we have public comments?
That is exactly what I was gonna do. So, just for the publics to know, you know, it is, it is within our ability to make a motion and a second before we go to public comment, but of course, I would never skip public comment, so I will check in with our clerk to see if anyone has submitted public comment on this item, and I'll remind those of us joining us via Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, or press star nine if you're calling in to be recognized. So, Sherry, has anyone submitted public comment, or is there anyone waiting to speak?
There are no, there are no comment cards, and I don't see any raised hands.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor from Member Bouders and a second by Member Medina. I think we can go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Next up, we've got Item 12.2. This is designation of voting delegate and alternate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and I'll just let my colleagues know that I've already organized my schedule so that I will be available to travel to Sacramento just on the voting day of the 24th, should we have an item that comes up that we need to vote on. I will not be attending the other days of the convention, but I am available to vote and make some noise if we need, require that. And we'll know what the resolutions are at our September 13 meeting. So, any discussion amongst the colleagues before, I'm happy to be the appointment? And we, we need an alternate as well, correct? Sherry?
Yes, you may have one or even two alternates.
If anyone would like to join me, or just be there, be an alternate in name, because I've already cleared my schedule and arranged for childcare, so you can count on me to be there. Okay, so, the, we will go ahead and make myself the member and Member Medina the alternate, and at this time, I'll, I'll look for a public comment. Sherry, has anyone submitted electronic public comment on this item?
They have not, and no raised hand.
No raised hands, and I'll remind the public that if you're joining us via Zoom, use the raise hand feature to be recognized, or if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hand in that way. And seeing still no raised hands, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Do we need to vote on that, Sherry, or is that direction enough?
Yes, go ahead and do a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion to appoint myself as the delegate and Member Medina as the alternate for the 2021 Annual Conference of the League of California Cities.
My second there.
There's a motion by myself, a second by Vice Mayor Donahue, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And as I stated earlier, we were going to take Item 14 out of order and take that up next. Colleagues, are there any future agenda item requests that we should address? Member Bouders?
Thank you. I just want to give appreciation to Frank Whitel for her public comment this evening. I think it's important when members of the public bring really timely and well-thought-out proposals for future agenda items, that we, we discuss those items and be responsive to them. I understand that there's a lot of things pending, and so I'm looking at whether or not staff feel that they could provide a study session at a high level about these issues, and how we might be able, as a city, to be responsive or proactive, or just monitor, or even partner with HOAs, and I think the request was about older HOAs. Most of the city thankfully is not old, it's all in the last 20 years, so I don't think this is a monumental amount of work we're talking about, but I'd like to ask that we have that discussion in quarter one of '22.
Right.
Okay, that's my ask.
Does anyone else have anything? Member Medina?
I'd like to suggest that we have a discussion about potential exemptions granted by council to our transit overlay map.
Okay, that's fine with me. Okay, you've got three, four for that, unanimous. And then, I've got just, I'd like to bring before council a letter of support for the Moakma Alone tribe of their successor to the Verona, the federally-recognized Verona ban of Native Americans. Their, their registry is over 600, so they're the biggest, most inclusive group of descendants of the Alone tribe in the East Bay, and they are looking for support to regain their federal recognition, which was stripped of them administratively. So, I'd like to bring that forward to the September 13 meeting, if my colleagues are amenable to that. And would, do folks want a presentation from the chairwoman or their historian? Is that would take about, they just presented to the mayor's conference, it would take about 25 minutes, probably.
Okay, I have a question. Was this stripped by the last federal administration?
This, this was stripped by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, so I, I don't have knowledge of who the appointees were. This has been a saga that's been going on for decades, actually. They have, I've, I've heard the presentation twice now, once personally, just to myself. I recommended that the group go before the mayor's conference, where the chairwoman of the Moakma Alone and their historian, who is a college professor, presented their case. That, the conference did not decide to act as a group, but I did think that we could hear this issue as a city, and it looks like they're going to continue to do work within the cities of Alameda County. City Manager Daniel, did you have a comment?
Madam Mayor, I'm just wondering if it might be, the October 5 meeting might be a little less crowded in terms...
That is fine, that's fine.
...space, because I do think it's, it's a, it's a very rich view. There may be other speakers who will come, so maybe we can carve out more time on the 5th.
That is, that's fine with me. I just, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so colleagues, we got the thumbs up on that letter recommendation? Okay, very good, and so, that is all I have for that, and with that, that's gonna take us to our next item. And, Member Bouders, do you want to officially recuse yourself from Item 12.3?
I will, Madam Mayor. So, Item 12.3 relates to the Lennar Development and Affiliated Actions tied to that, and I own a property located at 4260 Howick Street in Emeryville, which is within 500 feet of the property. It'll be subject to discussion, I have not participated and will not participate in this discussion, and I'm accusing myself, and at this time, I bid you all good evening, but I asked the city clerk if she would transfer me to the attendees list, so I can watch this for as long as I decide I'm interested.
Okay, I'm changing your rule right now.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
All right.
So, I will want to go to the attendee list, and let us all know when Councilmember Bouders finds off.
This is Item 12.3. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving the conceptual design and directing Lennar multifamily communities to proceed with final design and installation of Bicycle Boulevard Level 4 and 5 traffic calming measures, and for the benefit of the public, we've seen this item before, but in less detail, and it's been brought back to us with a very specific details for the council's review. So, at this time, I will turn it over to staff for a presentation.
Madam Mayor, we have Michael Roberts, our senior civil engineer from Public Works, accompanied by Jeff Knowles from ALTA, who will be making the presentation tonight. And Mike, I believe you have a PowerPoint, is that right?
Yes, I believe, Sherry, can you post that up?
Yes, one moment, please.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll also note that Nathan Tull from Lennar Multifamily Communities is here as well.
Great, thank you. And Mike, welcome to our digital council chambers.
Thank you.
Does that look like the right one?
This is it.
Okay, and this is a PDF which explains all the orders that I can't get rid of, sorry about that.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Mike Roberts with the Public Works Department, and presenting the Sherman Williams Mixed-Use Project Traffic Calming Measures for your consideration. Next slide. For your consideration tonight will be two separate items. One is the Bicycle Boulevard Level 4 Treatment Measures Concept Plan for Horton, 53rd, and 45th Streets. Per the project conditions of approval, Lennar Multifamily Communities is seeking direction from the City Council on whether the Level 4 Concept Plan shall proceed to final design and be installed. Development of the Level 4 Concept Plan included input from staff, public workshop, and, and public workshop in D-Met. The project conditions of approval require that the Bicycle Boulevard Level 4 improvements shall be constructed prior to issuance of the first TCO for buildings on respective lots 2, 3, 4, or 5. Next slide, please. Also, for your consideration is the Horton Street Bicycle Boulevard Level 5 Treatment Measures Concept Plan. Per the Lennar conditions of approval, we're seeking direction from council on whether the Lennar, the Level 5 Concept Plan shall proceed to final design and be installed. The Emeryville EPAC voted in support of the presentation as the presented term restriction concept plans. If council direction is to proceed with the concept, the project's conditions of approval... If council direction is to proceed with the concept, the project's conditions of approval require that these improvements shall be built within a year of issuance of the temporary certificate of occupancy of the last building to be occupied. The diverter at 53rd and Horton may be modified or replaced by traffic calming improvements related to biomediality development project. Next slide, please. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Nathan Tunnel with LMC.
Well, good evening, Mayor Martinez and council members and city staff. As Mike Roberts outlined, we're here, I think, for the second time to go over the Level 4 and 5 traffic calming measures. I'm joined this evening by Jeff Knowles from Alta Planning Design, also with Evan Danbacher from Carlson Barbie Gibson, our civil engineer. And I think this would, our time would be best served just to have Jeff go into a brief presentation of the changes that we've made since the last time we brought this item to the council. And so I'll have Jeff provide presentation this time.
Thank you, Nathan. Next slide, please. Mayor Martinez, members of city council, this is Jeff Knowles speaking to you, principal planner at Alta Planning and Design, supporting the project team in this application. I wanted to remind council and members of the public that the Bike Boulevard recommendations come out of your current pedestrian and bicycle plan. That plan is currently being updated, but this is where we get the recommendations for and the goals set in that plan for the types of levels that you want to see at those boulevards. Next slide, please. This is a map that came from that plan, there you go, that identifies Horton and Doyle Streets as the main north-south spines in the Bike Boulevard network with east-west connections on 45th, 53rd, Stanford, 59th, and 62nd Streets. That's making up the backbone of your Bike Boulevard network through town. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the plan also sets out goals for traffic volumes, that is, the number of cars on a given day that travel on the street, along with the average speed at which they should travel. For Emeryville, your Bicycle Boulevard goals are 22 miles per hour as the speed goal, and traffic volumes of 3,000 cars per day or less on Horton and portions of 53rd and 45th to Hollis, and traffic volumes less than 1,500 cars on 53rd and 45th from Hollis to St. Pablo. Next slide. I'm not going to go through all the details, this was presented the last council meeting, but these are the most recent traffic counts taken by city staff to show your traffic volumes and average speeds exceeding the goals on Horton Street. Next slide. In your plan, there are identification of five different levels of traffic calming to help meet, to help better meet those goals. These are the different levels of traffic calming, so we refer to them in this application as Level 4 and Level 5, significant and diversion. And significant traffic calming includes a combination of different lane markings, signage, and then physical infrastructure in the roadway to get cars to slow down or to divert to different roads that are more capable of handling higher volume of traffic. Next slide, please. As staff Mike Roberts mentioned, this is part of the Sherman Williams Mixed-Use Development Project, in condition to address these Level 4 and 5 traffic calming treatments along 45th Streets, 53rd, Horton Street, from 40th to 53rd. Next slide. Per the Sherman Williams Lennar Project Conditions of Approval, Mike has read this before, but I'm going to just read it for the good of the group, Bicycle Boulevard Level 4 Traffic Calming Measures along 45th Street Corridor and 53rd Street Corridor from St. Pablo Avenue to Horton Street and along Horton Street Corridor from 40th to 53rd Street. The conceptual design for said Level 4 Treatment Measures shall be developed by the applicant with input from city staff, community meeting, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and Transportation Committee. This plan shall include boulevards identified in condition of approval and shall be approved by the city council. Next slide. So I'm happy to report we received input from the public and the BPEC in the fall of 2017. The Level 4 Traffic Calming Treatment Measures, concept plans were not taken to the Transportation Committee as required by the conditions of approvals since a committee member needed to recuse themselves ahead of conference. So the meeting did not have forum, and so we were not able to meet that application. Next slide. A workshop was held at the Emeryville Center for Community.
Can I ask that we put this in present mode, since this is like a finely detailed thing and be easier for everyone to see? Sheri, I think that's the, is that the problem with this being a PDF?
Yes, it's a PDF, so it doesn't have the same flexibility as a PowerPoint. I can try to make it a little bigger, but we're going to lose edges.
That's okay, one of the same does a PowerPoint.
Sheri, I'm not sure if I have the capability to share my screen, but I can also take control if that's possible.
You don't, but I can give it to you if that will help.
Sure.
One moment.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
And that was Jeff I was speaking with?
Yes, please, Sheri.
All right, you should be able to share now.
Is that better, Councilmember Medina?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you for bearing with. Public workshop was held at ECCL on Monday, November 13th. We presented two options to the public for this Level 4 Traffic Calmings. Option A presented eight new speed hump locations, shown in green. Option B presented four new speed hump locations and four raised crosswalk locations, one with curb extensions. The results of that public workshop were that Option B, plan that received the most favorable support. The next month, the December 4, 2017 meeting of the Emeryville BPEC, the committee voted to support Option B as well. BPEC comments supported the use of flexible delineators, these are flexible posts in the design of speed humps, and voted against constructing hardscape curbs at speed humps. This is presented as Exhibit A in Stanford Port. On 53rd, the design includes a speed hump added to the existing traffic circle, a new speed hump between Boyer and Spur Alley, and a raised crosswalk at Spur Alley. On 45th Street, the design includes a speed hump between Doyle and Emery Park and two raised crosswalks at Emery Park and Holden Street. Raised crosswalk at Emery Park would include curb extensions in this concept design. There's also a proposed raised intersection and crosswalk at Spur Alley. On Horton Street, the design includes an additional speed hump between Park and Sherwin, and curb extensions at Horton and Sherwin Avenue. I control the slides. Moving on to the Level 5 Traffic Calming Measures. Again, per the conditions of approval, the applicant shall seek direction from city council on whether Bicycle Boulevard Level 5 Treatment Measures along Horton Street Corridor from 40th to 53rd to include diversion of northbound traffic at Horton and 40th, and the diversion of southbound vehicular traffic at Horton and 53rd shall be installed. Concept design for said Level 5 Traffic Treatment Measures shall be developed by the applicant with input from city staff, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and Transportation Committee. This body is very, very well aware of the Sherman Williams site, but for members of the public that may be joining us, project site's located at the former Sherman Williams Paint Factory bounded by Sherwin Avenue to the south, Horton Streets to the east, the Union Pacific Railroad tracks also to the east, and covered ends just south of 53rd Street. The Level 5 Traffic Calming Measures, and again, those are the most significant diverting traffic from a corridor, very useful for reducing traffic volumes and of course speeds as well. The Level 5 Traffic Calming Measures located at 53rd and Horton to limit southbound traffic, and at 40th and Horton to limit the northbound traffic. This is what was previously presented to city council. We received feedback from council about changes that we'd like to see. Since that time, we've been able to meet internally and also meet with first responders, Alameda County Fire Department, Emeryville Police Department, to get feedback, further feedback about the design and further revise that. So I'm happy to present a revised version of the diverter at 40th and Horton. And so in this revised version, we've kept the things that were consistent with the last plan, taking the bike lanes through the intersections in green paint here, the skip boxes, two-stage left turn boxes to make it easier for bicyclists moving north on Horton Street, turn left onto 40th. On Horton Streets south of 40th, we've taken a travel lane out so that cars cannot proceed straight through this intersection anymore, they have to turn left or right, and created a buffered bicycle lane that has a hardscape median as it approaches the intersection, seven feet in width. The diversion that I can draw attention to now, the things that have changed since the last, the previous plan, is that we've got three islands that would be, zoom in here, we have three islands as diverters that would keep vehicles from turning right through or left onto Horton Street. We've also designed a change in pavement color, and so this would be, potentially it could be concrete or a different color, contrasting color to the black asphalt. So a visual cue to drivers to let them know that they're entering a pedestrian space. And so in detail, these islands, two of them would be raised, they'd be made up of concrete, they'd have beveled edges, and on them, they would include signage and flexible posts. And so with each of these three islands, there would be a do not enter sign and what we call K71 bollards. These are flexible bollards, but they will have a vertical element that also will be a little more imposing. I can give some examples of what those look like installed in other locations, but these are the three islands. The one island that would be closest to the turn is not raised. The reason for this is in coordination with the Alameda County Fire Department, they still need to be able to make turns from 40th Street, turning right on Horton Street for emergency situations. And all the dimensions here shown meet the dimensions of their fire truck, their current apparatus, and their potential future rig that they are looking to purchase. So these are the dimensions that work for them, we went out and field tested that. These are examples of K71 bollards. This is located in the city of Oakland and the city of San Jose. And this, these are flexible delineators, these are not what we're proposing, but you can see a median or a beveled raised curb here, that's kind of showing you the example of what these could look like. Of course, in our design, if we go back, they're much wider than this example, so 60 inches, 37 inches, and 37, so about three and a half feet for the smaller ones, and then about five feet width for the one on the outside edge. This is an example of what the do not enter sign could look like. This is a vendor that the city could, sorry, the city that the applicant could select to install. These are relatively inexpensive, so if fire department needs to go through at high speeds, these are breakaway, it would not impede their ability to respond to emergency situation. Again, this has been signed off and approved by Alameda County Fire Department. We went through and modeled how the different fire departments' apparatus would move through these diverters, and also went out and met with and mocked up these designs in the field using spray chalk and cones, and had the fire department move through the different No changes were made to the previously presented modifications on 40th Street as we approach Hollis, or moving back the left turn pocket, removing the existing landscape median, and there'll also be a proposed median would pass through so that fire department could access Holden Street, but drivers would not be able to make a left turn onto 40th Street from Holden. Finally, presenting the southbound diverter at 53rd and Horton Street. This was what was previously presented, and the modification that meets the fire department's, again, their apparatus, so they can move quickly and straight through Horton Street, through this diverter unimpeded, whereas the majority of drivers would still need to be able to divert. So zoom in detail here, we're extending, what you have is the bicycle facility up through about two-thirds of this intersection, where then the bicycles would transition to a Bike Boulevard treatment. The wheels of the fire department vehicle are wider than a typical motor vehicle, they will go past over the raised island, and then there would be some vertical elements as well on the island, shown here. Do not enter signs, K71 bollards, and the vertical delineators that you have currently used on your Bike Way facility. As was previously presented, we believe that these options taken in concert will help you meet your goals for volumes on Horton Street with estimated traffic volumes below your 3,000 vehicle per day limit. So in summary, what's presented for your consideration, Level 4 Treatments, four speed humps, three raised crosswalks, five curb extensions, and one raised intersection. Level 5 Treatments, two partial traffic diverters, one bike box, three two-stage left turn boxes, bike lanes dashed through the 40th and Horton intersection, modifications to the 40th Street median, and modifications of bike lane and vehicle lane markings on Horton Street south of 40th. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Colleagues, are there any clarifying questions? Vice Mayor Donahue?
Is the raised pedestrian crossing at 45th and Holden in the right place? In other words, where it's depicted now, there is not a sidewalk on the east side of Holden Street, whereas on the west side, there is a sidewalk. And it seems to me that the raised pedestrian crossing should be at that location, or is there some reason why you've indicated it at the east location?
I'm going to ask if Jason Neary is available to unmute and answer that question?
I think I can partially answer that. This is Mike Roberts. So what we've observed in the field is rush hour cut-through traffic in that neighborhood that is generally generated from 45th Street east of Hollis, and it generally proceeds west and often turns left on Holden there. And so if we were to place that, you know, we saw it as traffic calming first and, you know, a pedestrian element second, we were to place that on the west side of that intersection, it wouldn't necessarily intercept all vehicles in making that cut-through.
Thank you for that answer.
Member Medina, you have some questions?
I do have a few, and this is probably going to be both for staff and applicant here. I was curious when I was looking at this in greater detail, why on Horton Street, south of 40th, there's a buffer for the bike lane on the, God, east-hand side of the street and not the west? That's the most cardinal directions I've ever used in a sentence, I hope that was right.
Yes, I think I can answer that. It's helpful, I can bring this slide up for...
Yeah, I've got a few about the slides, so maybe we can just stay here for a second.
So the question was why the buffered bicycle lane on the east side of Horton and not on the west? I think the reason here is that we looked at a couple of different iterations of how to design a bike lane, where you have a right-turning vehicle that would cross over the bike lane and do it in a safe fashion. And so we wanted to have more separation for the bicyclists and more comfort for the bicyclists heading north on this Bicycle Boulevard. It's not a tremendous amount of buffer space here, but what's, I think, most important is the hardscape as it approaches the intersection so that cars cannot block or get in the way of the bicycle lane there. And so that was the big key thing, is just having room and space for that hardscape, the last 30 feet, having that vertical buffer, some sort of physical barrier to keep bikes and cars out of the bike lane.
Okay, my question is why... Oh yeah, my question is, why isn't it also on the other side of the street?
Didn't have enough space to keep the 11-foot lanes, we're just, we're trying to do that.
Bring the turn lane down to 10.5? I mean, how big is, this buffers are pretty narrow.
I think we'd need at least 18 inches to make a meaningful buffer on the other side, but...
Is it? Is it not feasible to bring everything down to 10.5 then? That would get us 18 inches.
That would be have to something that they talk to transit providers. I know that they're, they push for 11-foot lanes for their vehicles.
My next question is, I'm trying to separate my questions from my discussion items, so give me a second here. I noticed a kind of discrepancy between our staff report and kind of what we are stated purpose in some of the design, and that is that we're supposed to seek to eliminate the left turn movement eastbound to Horton, northbound, and eliminate right turn movement from 40th westbound to Horton Street northbound. So it seems like we're trying to eliminate all movement going northbound on Horton, but we aren't actually trying to eliminate bike movement.
Correct.
Obviously on its face. So one question is, is it possible for where, when it says, to still allow bikes to turn left off of Horton Street through that, for the signage to reflect that?
To turn, for bicyclists hitting southbound and turning left onto 40th?
Sorry, no, for cyclists on 40th, turning left.
Yes, yes, and that's provided in the, to make that an easier movement, that's what this two-stage left turn box does.
I know, but the signage doesn't reflect it, the signage just says no turns, right? Or is it clear with the signage that bikes can be turning there?
We will add to the do not enter except bikes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it with my questions that are comments. Oh, bots dots, is that your final answer?
So bots dots, there could be an alternative that we reviewed with the fire department about an acceptable alternative, and there is a low-profile curb speed pump that could be used in place of bots dots as an alternative.
I'll hold up that in discussion, thank you.
All right, colleagues, is that the entirety of our clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Looks like it, so I will check in with our clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment for this item, or whether anyone has a raised hand, and I'll remind those attendees joining us via Zoom to use the raise hand feature. If you'd like to be recognized, if you're calling in, please press star nine, and you will be recognized. You will have two minutes each. Sherri, is there anyone waiting?
No, I have no comment cards, and I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, great, we will close the public comment portion of this item, and I just, I have one question, and this is maybe a rookie question that Scott and Ally probably already know the answer to, but what happens to those larger bollards when the fire department needs to get through? I know what happens to the skinny ones, they just flop over and come back, but a larger one with signs on top of it, what, how does that work? Ally, did you want to answer?
I can't, I mean, maybe we should let the Public Works Department answer, they're more accurate than I am.
They're knocked down similar, in a similar way, and they might not be as resilient, so maybe after five knockdowns, we're looking at replacing it, whereas a four-inch delineator can be started many times.
Yeah, I've seen the other ones in action, you can kind of just slap them, but those larger ones, they look substantial, which is good if you're in a car that's approaching them, but, you know, I'm glad to have that answer, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Scott, I know, I know Ally you've got some, so I'll come back to you to close this out. Scott, do you have any comments?
Well, am I out of it, or did the public already weigh in on this?
There was no one in the public who wanted to speak up to this item.
Well, I am pleased with this, I guess you would say, more particular design. It's less conceptual, more solid, and it really looks like it's going to work.
Okay, great, thank you. Member Medina?
Yeah, okay, so first up, I want to address the bots dots, and I appreciate Lennar taking the time to give me a preview of this, so I could tell them a week ago that I hate bots dots. And I am happy to hear that we might have something besides that, because they are really unpleasant to bike over, if you've ever tried it, quite dangerous in fact. So I might understand there is an opportunity to use the low-profile speed humps, which I think I've seen downtown Oakland instead, is that accurate? Can we give direction that we would prefer that?
I'm happy to support that.
That's accurate.
Great.
We'll take that in, yep.
Nope, that's to bots dots. Second thing, I would like to see, I really appreciate the hardscape, and I think that the hardscape is really important for preventing vehicles from just blitzing through this the way they do some of our flex post, and that's why I was so insistent that this come back to council with a hardscape proposal that had actually been fleshed out. So I really appreciate staff taking that time and going through that. I still have a concern that people will try to mount the beveled curbs. I understand the requirement for beveled curbs for fire safety. So given that we are allowed to accomplish this modification through hardscape signage, striping, and traffic signal improvements, I would like to ask that we add a traffic signal improvement on that right-hand turn from 40th to Horton Street that is a blank out sign, not just a no right turn on red, a full-on blank out sign, like the kind of begging Caltrans for. And that would be a very big no right turn with like, I can, I sent Christina a picture earlier of what they look like, and I think that would send a very clear signal to drivers that this is not for them.
And we've got that, Councilmember Medina, I'll work with Mike to assess that with Lennar. We haven't, obviously, we haven't looked at it yet, but we, I, we understand what you're going for, and the traffic analysis, as I understand it, does provide that right turns would not be permitted, so we need to figure out the signage for that. Mike, anything to add, did I miss or mistake?
No, that's right, and just one other thing to note is that in the traffic analysis of this diverter, it was assumed that right turns on red in the northbound and southbound directions were not allowed.
Right, we just need to communicate that vociferously. And my other question, I guess, for Mike then, do we have, is there a plan to have separate bike signals here?
That will be part of the analysis to see if it's feasible, yeah. In the staff report, we mentioned that it's going to take a little further analysis to see if it's possible.
I'd like to say if I had consensus from House that we'd like to see a blank out sign, because that is the most high-profile and effective fashion, and also accompanying bike signals to let bikes know where they can go, and I think that further reinforces for drivers that it's not for you.
Scott, are you supportive of these ideas? Okay, very good.
All right, I got a couple comments from Bike East Bay that I thought were relevant just because this is a good time to discuss the paint configuration, and one was that they were concerned that the two-stage bike turn box at the southeast corner of Horton and 40th Street could be shifted further west, so it's not in the way of drivers turning right on red. Christina, picture, you're doing the thing that I always have to do too.
Yeah, I'm...
Could we ask Jeff to address that? Jeff? Yeah.
Yes, so moving the, get my pointer out, this one further to the west.
In some way so that it's not blocking the right turn lane to preclude that conflict, which I thought was a good catch on Biky Space Bar. What do you think?
So cars turning right, yeah, I think that what Mike mentioned or maybe alluded to is, I think the signal timing would be that there would not be cars turning right on red.
Okay, all right.
It's not clear in this diagram, but it would be part of the analysis. We've looked a little bit at the signal phasing, and yeah, we don't want a right on red situation, so that's something we'd have to look at. And Mike, did I communicate that clearly from what we've discussed?
That's right, yeah.
Great. There's also a suggestion that there's a second two-stage turn box on the east side of Horton and 40th for bike riders turning left from Horton onto 40th. I don't know if that fits within our intersection design.
We, sorry, we evaluated that, and it did not fit.
Okay, someone to clarify. I think that is most of the comments that I have for this design. I would, so to sum up, I would like to see any analysis on whether we can get the, God help me, south side of Horton Street down to 10.5 through the three cross-sections of traffic lanes or vehicle lanes, so that we could add a buffered, a buffer to the bike lane on the west side.
So Madam Mayor, these design desires, we can't commit that all of these can be implemented, we can commit that we'll take a look at them, but with the council's direction, we just want to be really clear that you understand that we'll evaluate, but we haven't done that yet, and so we need to, we need to have the flexibility, just want to make that clear.
I understand.
Is there a way to move forward with a resolution that just indicates that all of these suggestions are evaluated?
Yeah, you can include, you can include that in the motion, but just, I just want to clarify that there are requests for evaluation, not direction, because they, we need the engineering work.
Correct. So, Member Medina, do you feel comfortable making a motion that's inclusive of those 10, 10 feet, point, 10.5 feet vehicle lanes, the no bots dots, the larger sign, and the bike signals?
Yeah, give me a second here.
It's a mouthful for me, so I think, I'll allow you to do that.
Okay, first of all, I would like to, to support the resolution with the recommendations that we eliminate the use of bots dots and replace them with low-profile speed humps, that we look to implement to add a blank out sign for cars turning, to let cars know they cannot turn right onto Horton Street from 40th Street, and to add accompanying bikes light signals, to, and to also look at the feasibility of providing a buffered bike lane south of Horton Street on the west-hand side.
And staff, is that sufficient?
Got it, I'll work with the clerk to capture that, thank you.
Very good, and I'm happy to offer a second on that.
Thank you, there's a portion of my brain that really didn't want to do that.
Well, thank you for that exercise. And I have so much appreciation for my colleagues on council who understand all these transportation issues at a much deeper level than I do, and I really rely on your expertise, and do biking around the city as much as you do, so thank you. So we have a motion on the table and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Vowders is recused from this item. Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye, and that is unanimous amongst those present?
Oh, sorry, one thing I want to clarify, you'll come back to us with the curb paint thing, right? The paint issue, please leave it in the come up.
Well, one of the, as in Jeff's presentation, I think he identified that we'll be looking at colors which could include concrete, because obviously one of the things we need to take into consideration is maintenance costs.
Great, thank you.
Okay, very good, and with that, we are going to go ahead and close this item. I don't see anything under Department head reports, and we have already addressed item 14, so with that, we are ready to adjourn this meeting, the time is 9:35 PM. Thank you, everyone, for your patience with my many technical issues, and good night in whatever time zone you are. Thank you.
Good night.
See you in September.